Thank you. So, I want to agree with a couple commissioners that disagree. So, first Commissioner Barrett. I agree with you, we cannot have patients waiting on the wall. And we should not have only one provider. So, we did something to fix that. We approved two more COPCNs. So, both of the hospitals now have it. But they just got them. They need a chance to make that work for them. We've just heard our hospitals saying, now that they're ready to go, we can't cut them off at the knees. We have three providers. There's no... I agree, competition's good, we can't have a monopoly. And we don't. We have three providers. Had we had just one provider, I think my vote may be different. But we don't. We need to support our hospitals. And the one provider that's been doing a good job. The other reason why I seconded Commissioner Kennard's motion is I also had a problem with the surveys. So, before, for the public, you don't know. We've been dumped with information way past the information that went out to the public. I don't love that. I think you should see what I see. That's just the way it went down. The information that we first got weeks ago, and I looked at the surveys, I thought, this is really strange. There's no signatures, there's no dates. Then we got a couple of letters then that said, we don't remember filling out a survey, we didn't sign anything. So, I went back and looked in the... With the two people that said we didn't, and I looked at the two surveys, and the handwriting appeared to be the same. So, I have some problems with the surveys. Then the two hospitals, our trusted partners, our hospitals that are providing care to our citizens, are saying, we didn't fill these surveys out. So, as you said, surveys are out the window for me. Two weeks ago, our fire chief did not make a recommendation. I think he was scurrying to try to get one. I have zero information of what was used. I did ask about, well, how did you come up with this? And it was surveys, some more surveys. I haven't seen the surveys, I don't know what questions are on the surveys. What I do know is two-thirds of those surveys never responded back. So, again, surveys are not working for me. I like checkboxes. Thank you Commissioner Baze for putting this on the agenda. I also was getting research. My idea was to put it on the next. I applaud you for doing it. But, forgive me for having to read this. We have a code to go by now, and I think that we're still not following it. And this is the other reason I'm voting no. "The B.O.C.C. shall determine that the proposed service, to the extent to be authorized by the certificate, is or will be required by the present or future public convenience or necessary, and that the applicant is financially and otherwise able to provide adequate and uninterrupted service at the times required." And when I asked if we did this, no. We see that they have an ambulance, and it checks the boxes. But we don't know that they can provide the service. And I asked about the finances, did we look into that? Are they a financially stable company? We didn't do that. We have no right to put this through when the small guideline that we have, which we need to fix, we didn't follow it. So, I do have a problem with some things in the presentation with these surveys. I think some things were presented that aren't as they should be. I don't think that we can think like, well, if one ambulance is good, 10 more companies have to be better, right? For our community? Excuse me, I've had a verbal dry mouth today. It doesn't work like that. One, and I don't remember his name, I apologize. I do remember Sugar Mill Woods. He understood that. Because if we saturate the market, the one trusted company that we have, and you cut their business by 50%, could leave. That's not good for the health care of our community. If we need another one, I'd be the first one to vote for that. We just voted in two more, each of our hospitals. That's going to alleviate any of that burden you were talking about, Commissioner Barrett. And that's going to allow Med Fleet to... Those couple that were a little bit later, they're going to fix that. So, we have fixed the need as it is today. Next year, two years from now, does something come back? Does something change? Maybe. But for today, I have to look out to the health and safety of citizens. When we talk about evacuation in gray skies, I understand that. But likely, we can oversaturate a market for just in case there's a full evacuation of a hurricane, and we will call on other people. Just like when Charlotte County got hit years ago. Our sheriff's office went down there, as did many others in the state. We can't say, oh, what if we got a direct hurricane? We need, you know, 100 more deputies on the street. It's too much every day, but we might need them. Or fire trucks, or, and we're talking about ambulance, 911 ambulances, yes. In the worst circumstance, we could oversaturate our county with many things. But when we're talking about a business for everyday support of the citizens, and I have to vote to protect the health and safety of them, I have to do what's right. And I can't take information that I don't know is factual that will potentially hurt the company that is providing the services. And I also will do nothing to hurt the two hospitals that we need to serve our community when they're just getting started with their ambulance transports. So, thank you for my time. And that is why I'm sticking with the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Just to address Commissioner Finnegan's point about undercutting the hospitals. They, more or less, monopoly is the wrong word. But they, this is an internal to their hospital system transfers, is my understanding. So, they'll be running them from Seven Rivers to Tampa, the standalone to Seven Rivers or to Tampa. And HCA will be running back and forth to Ocala. It's simply moving patients between their own facilities. They're not entering the general market. And you better believe, they're going to use their own hospital transport first, their own COPCN. They would only call Med Fleet, or, you know, if Ecare came onboard, they would only call them as a backup for their own ambulances. So, not undercutting them.
Commissioner Barrett.
All right. You said that we have the hospital. Well, like Commissioner Davis said, hospital to hospital. Oh, hospital to hospital is different than what they were saying. They were explaining, say, an ALS to the hospital. That's where the need is. Not hospital to hospital. If I'm in Seven Rivers, well, not Seven, well, yeah, Seven Rivers, TGA, okay, and they say I have to go down to Tampa, I am going to take the Tampa Hospital ambulance. Because I am in an emergency. I'm not a non-emergency. But if I'm going from the hospital to Rose Castle, that's a non-emergency. That's where the Ecare would take in, or the Med Fleet that we already have. When we have only three possible ambulances in our county that can do that, that is not sufficient for the number of patients that would need help. Now, the certificate is only for five years. So, if they're not making any money, they won't stay. If Med Fleet's not making any money, they're not going to stay. We only offer a certificate for a five-year time period. So, we're not saying it's forever and ever and ever. And I think it would be really nice if we did follow and say, let them have an opportunity and see how it works. Five years is not a long time anymore.
I think he was first. Commissioner Kennard.
Commissioner Barrett, that is an absolutely horrible way to run a railroad. You cannot saturate the market and say, let's see what happens in five years. The service drops, that's what happens. The quality of service decreases. Yes, the two hospitals are going to transport between their facilities. But that takes the pressure off of the non-emergency transfers. Because right now, up until they got their COPCN, they had to use these other services. Now, they've got their own, they won't need to use those. So, those resources now are available to the non-emergency. So, yes, I do think it's important that the two hospitals have got their COPCNs now. That opens up, like I said, these, those resources from a Med Fleet to do these other non-emergency transports. So, just diluting it and seeing what happens. That's no way to operate stuff like this.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan.
That handled one thing. This is a dangerous road to walk on. The other thing I want to say is that we have taken care of any potential issues. So, this just happened. So, yes, I don't know that there's enough business for two. And I, but I go back to, even if somebody on this board, which might be counted to two at this point, says, maybe another one's needed. I don't find that need, but maybe you do. Do you think this is the right company? Because like I said, forget, like I said, like our hospitals said, and some people that wrote in to us, there have been some questionable practices and some questionable information that has gotten to us. Broward County, Monroe County, that's a far leap to Citrus County. I know with Med Fleet, you can call it three or five or six ambulances. If something happens, they have resources. They can get in here very, very quickly. And I like that about them. So, I would caution, if you're even leaning, if you are of the argument, one is, three are good, and one more is even better. More people will come. So, if, I don't know which way this board's going to go yet. But you better make darn sure that you're happy with what's before you at this time. But I'm sticking with what I know is Citrus County. What we have to follow. We've not done that. We've not followed it. Thank you.
Well, it looks like I've drawn the lucky straw a couple times today. We've heard a lot of testimony on both sides today. And when this came a month or so ago, when I looked at our ordinance, county ordinances are much like a Florida statute. It's Citrus County law. And I was a little dismayed that when we have something on our agenda, we're not following the procedures. And so, as flawed as the system is, and despite the objective criteria, I don't really like either way that this has been presented. But I will tell you, because we do have a recommendation from our chief, I feel that is following the ordinance at this time. So, given that we have a recommendation from our fire chief, that we do need to issue this COPCN, that will be my recommendation today. That will be the way that I'm voting. So, I'm going to call for the vote. We have a nominate, or a vote, or a motion to deny this application by Kennard and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. You're, nay? Nay.
I'm sorry.
So... Two to three. Yes, ma'am. Congratulations, Ecare.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Thought that's why you just added motion.
No, motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
H4B.
Since we didn't get your motions.
Second.
So, we're going on now to a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to execute a certificate of public convenience under item B of that.
Correct.
So, I, we have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Janet Barrett. Motion. All in favor, say aye.
Well, board comment.
Aye.
I know we just had this, but it's a new motion. Thank you.
We have to have.
Commissioner Baze, I respect that you would ask the fire chief for a recommendation. But like I said, that, we don't know what that was really based on. It was a simple survey that we do not know what questions were asked. Two-thirds did not answer back. We're moving forward on possibly 12 people that we don't know the questions they were asked. We don't know where they're from, and we don't know if they're rank and file, or if they're ahead of something. Our law, as you say, states that we were obligated to make sure that this company is fiscally responsible and that they can maintain a business in Citrus County. We never did that. So, I'm just cautioning us one more time that we did not follow the law. And this was a very, I think, rushed and forced recommendation, not based on a lot of factual evidence. And we don't know what that even is. I'm, I just, another stab at it. Because I know that you want to follow the rules and the law. But in my opinion, we've not done that. And maybe something changes in six months. But today, I'm not comfortable with this.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
If the chief's recommendation for approval of this application was in part based on these surveys that now appear to be nonsense, and both hospitals coming forward and saying, we weren't surveyed, I think that that goes a long way towards saying those surveys are nonsense. Does it make sense to revisit this with the chief and say, do you still recommend this? Is this still your recommendation? That we approve this? I mean, I don't know how much of a role those surveys played in his decision. The last conversation that I had with the chief was, he didn't have a recommendation. Was that, you know, they completed the application, and his role was just to, you know, is the application complete? And bring it to the board. And now, again, I don't know if the presentation of these nonsense surveys swayed him one decision or one direction or the other. So, does it make sense to revisit that?
Well, I think what's on the, and Madam Attorney, you can help me here, and the administrator. But we've had a public hearing. We've had input from both parties, other professionals in the group. And we've had board conversation. And I think what's before us today, we have to take a vote on. And so, I would defer to Legal and our county administrator if you see otherwise. Did you say anything?
I'm going to look to Legal on the process.
You're to make your decision based upon the evidence and testimony that you've heard during this hearing. And in your backup materials.
And may I ask a question?
Sure.
Madam Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
What I read, that's current code, the law. And do you know of any, anything that I don't know? That the fiscal part of that did? Have you seen any evidence of that? That we followed this? Just with any?
I just closed the code, but I need to open it up again. There is a consideration. It's item J in there. It says that the chief is supposed to consider such other reasonable information as may be required by the department, including verification of financial responsibility. So, I, the chief made a recommendation, I'm sure. I have no reason to believe the chief did not follow A through J.
I do, only because I asked him, and he did not. So, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Unfortunately, the chief didn't testify during the hearing today.
Well, I mean, I'm saying it. I would never, I would never say anything disparaging about our chief or...
And I'm not suggesting...
Or misrepresent any conversation that I would ever have with him.
Commissioner, I wasn't suggesting that. I'm just saying the other commissioners didn't have the benefit of that conversation. Or they maybe did. I don't know. I don't know what y'all talked about. But I just know I didn't hear anything from the chief today.
Well, they may not always agree with me, but I would hope that they know that I would always tell the truth.
And I think this is exactly why it's on our agenda later today, to get a better ordinance on the books. But this is what we have before us today. Unfortunately, we had no, once they came before us and we were to conduct a public hearing, we could not change the ordinance to have a better framework in which to make these decisions. We had to go by what was on our books currently.
That was my point. But we didn't. We didn't follow what's on our books currently.
I have to, I mean, the fire chief is our fire chief, and I have to believe that he did his due diligence. And I have to rely on him as our expert in this. And that, and I've stated my position, and I'm sticking with my position. So... We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Barrett. I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Three to two.
Three to two. All right. Next, on our agenda is a public hearing or an ordinance pertaining to the public participation at board meetings and the administrative regulation 3.02.
Commissioners, at the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, amending section 2-49 Citrus County Code entitled Public Participation at Board Meetings, Providing for Repealer, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code of Ordinance... I'm sorry, I misspoke. Providing for Inclusion in the Citrus County Code, Providing for Modifications That May Arise From Consideration at Public Hearing, and Providing for an Effective Date.
All right. So, at our previous meeting, we came back to the, was asked to bring this back to talk about having open public procedures and the flow of our agenda. There was conversation about eliminating open to the public at the beginning. There was also discussion about having proclamations at the beginning, and then moving bids into the consent agenda and having those follow in order at the beginning of the meeting. And then, if we were going, then move into regular business. So, board members, do we want to discuss what we want first, and then open it up to the public?
That's up to y'all. I would just say that the two things were separate in that the public input was in the Citrus County Code. So, that's why you have the ordinance amendment. And then, the administrative regulation is what set forth the order of appearance, if you will. So, that's why you have those two things. And I thought it best to put them both in the same agenda item because that's what you directed me to do.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I've, you know, obviously had a few weeks to think about this. Kind of got sprung on me at the last meeting. And so, this job is all about balancing various folks' needs. And it's 170,000 people's needs, many of whom pay taxes here. So, we do need to be efficient with our meetings. One speaker earlier said that people are paid to be here, and they're paid regardless, right? But the shorter the meetings, the more they can go back to work and do other things, right? So, we also sometimes have very highly-paid consultants in the room that we need to clear out as soon as possible. We're also trying to be very respectful of our fellow agencies. You saw Florida Health, we bumped up, what was it, G1 to the beginning? We bumped up the Sheriff Department to the very beginning because we want to be respectful. We're always trying to be respectful of taxpayer dollars. All that being said, the flip side of the equation is that folks, especially folks that are working, need to be able to come at a more, hopefully more certain time. We haven't even finished first open to the public yet. So, I think we all recognize that the agenda is very difficult to get through sometimes. That being said, I totally hear that. I don't buy the argument that we're muzzling you because there's plenty of opportunity to speak. But I get the efficiency of working people needing to come here at the beginning and leave. So, where my heart is, and my balanced brain is, is to keep the first open to the public, limit it only to agenda items. And then, if you speak at the first open to the public for agenda item E12, for example, when we call E12, you've already said your piece. We've written a note that that's what you've talked about, you're for or against, for whatever reason. But you only get three minutes. So, that streamlines the meeting. We all sit on a lot of boards. And every board I've sat on, at the end, when they're not B.O.C.C. boards, at the end, it says, new business. So, if you've got something, you know, we get some really cool ideas sometimes. Folks come in out of the blue and offer to do something, or have a great idea for the county. The second open to the public is whatever you want to talk about. You know, bring us new ideas, come fuss at us for something that's not on the agenda. All of that other stuff. Always remember, we do, or, I'm sure not all of us are perfect at answering email. When it is a direct question to me on something that someone needs, and not just someone yelling at me to yell at me. When it's a direct question, and some, I absolutely serve my constituents. I do reply to emails, and I get staff involved, and I get stuff fixed. You have phone calls, you have emails. You can catch most of us out in the wild because we're very out there in various community events. You absolutely have full access to us. So, to sum up, keep the first open to the public only on agenda items for that day. You give up your right to have a second bite at the apple, to use Commissioner Kennard's phrase, on the agenda item if you speak at the first open to the public. And then, the second open to the public is new business. Anything you want to talk about with us, we're here. So, that's where my heart is.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Kennard.
Well, I completely disagree. If we're going to keep the first open to the public, then I think that it needs to be, my position would be that it needs to be whatever they want to come up and talk about. Because if we're, if we're going to take the approach that the, you know, the, you know, the public wants to come in, say their piece, and leave, then I don't think that it should be confined to just what's on the agenda. Now, I still would like to find a way that we can expedite getting some of the department heads out of here, getting, at times, the consultants or attorneys that are here. I'd like to get them out of here faster. So, maybe we consider moving the first public, first public input to after those presentations, where those folks, you know, if it's law enforcement, if it's fire, if it's EMS, stuff like that. We need those folks out of here and out on the street. So, if this, if this board's position, and I don't know what the board's position is going to be yet, I have a feeling. But if this board's position is going to be to keep that first public input, then let's move the others, you know. I don't know that anybody's going to like it, but let's move those other presentations and so forth forward in it. And then, we'll set a specific time for public input that maybe, you know, maybe it's 3:00, or maybe it's 3:30 or something along those lines. I don't know. Anyway, that would be my thought.
Commissioner Barrett.
Two weeks ago, I brought this up. I wanted to bring some civility to our meetings. I wanted public input at the beginning, prior to presentations, because I wanted everybody to have their input at one time so that they could get up, say it, and leave. Get up, say it, and leave. I had asked for a comfort break at 3:00. We didn't get one, but that's okay. And then, I had said, after the comfort break, we would have all the presentations. Which meant, anybody that was coming in to do a presentation wouldn't have to be here till 3:00. It would give them time to finish what they're doing at their job or wherever. And it would be a sensible time. The presentations would be all at one time. Input would all be at one time. When you go to the bids, you can stop bids and start bids. So, if the open to the public only took 20 minutes, you can start right in on the bids. And then, you can start and stop. And then you can start and stop bids anytime you really want. Okay, it's not interfering, but you got people's input. And I don't agree that they should only be able to input at the beginning. They get three minutes, that's all they get. If they are waiting for a topic so that they can get three more minutes, we should allow them that opportunity. Because that's only a total of six minutes to talk on something that they're passionate about, that they came here for. They took time out of their life, time out of their job, they, you know, they spent the time to be here. Now, if they have to wait till after the presentation, so maybe they gotta wait till 4 o'clock. But at least they got their time, their three minutes and their three minutes. And I had suggested if you wanted to get rid of one of the you know, open to the public, the one at the end, which is the one that I got to speak at, at almost every meeting. And if there was anybody else here, if there was anybody else here, it was amazing. So for me, that was a nonsensical one. Okay? And I never got any rebuttals to what I said at the last open to the public. You know, because everybody said, well, adjourned and they left. So the thing is, the open to the public is needed, but it needs to be the first thing. After we do the pledge, after we do the consent, after we get our ducks in a row for how we're going to do the meeting, what was added, what was taken away, and we get that all set, right into open to the public and let them get their stuff to us. Get their questions, get their information. Because we are here to, because of them. They voted us in. Now, the gentleman sitting back there, there's a lot of people sitting back there making good money. There didn't used to be that many. There used to be Larry Brock, Ken Cheek, the Fire Department, and every once in a while the Police Sheriff. Okay, all of a sudden now we get two rows of people. Okay, now, if we are that bad that we don't understand what they were talking about when we got these books and then we got our briefing, there's something wrong. Because the four main ones should be able to just sit there and say, you know, if there's a question, they could answer it, not 10 people, maybe four. So, I mean, we could take and get rid of the people that get big bucks and let them go back to their job on a board account, unless it's something really, really specific they have to talk about, that they're passionate about and have to get, you know, the words to it. You know, most of their things, they don't get up and say anything anyhow. Cheers.
Commissioner Finnegan.
By the way, my husband wears two hearing aids, so if I get loud, I'm not mad at anybody.
I heard him in my office on the phone with her.
So after the last meeting, you know, I had the suggestion to, to ask the attorney for the ordinance and Commissioner Kennard helped, you know, get me there. So thank you for that, because I thought that was going to be the best thing, right? The public gets to speak on everything first. But since then, I had a plethora of email, which I'm sure you all did too, explaining, like, thanks but no thanks, right? Everyone was pretty nice about it, but explaining why they need to talk about whatever they want to talk about at the beginning. And then I thought, you know, a perfect example of that is, I don't know if Steve remembers his name, I, I, I lost it for the moment, but the gentleman from Floral City that came before us about using the old firehouse, right? He had reached out to me in an email and we had kind of went back and forth, I was working on staff, but he just decided to show up and it was wonderful because then it got traction with all of you. And I thought, you know, really great suggestions come from the public. And, you know, the core of who I am, and because I'm old, I'll probably get the wording right. Some of you history buffs remember Abraham Lincoln's Gettysburg Address. It's, you know, the government of the people, for the people, by the people. I might have mixed those up. It's been a really long time since history. But, you know, and that, that's what it's all about. And to my core, I truly believe that's when government works. Government is the people that elect a person that they think will represent them well. And they have chosen the five of us. So when I hear countless number of people all saying, don't change it, don't change it, don't change it, that's going to be my vote, because I feel like that's what I'm representing today. If I had even heard, well, I wouldn't say one, because, I mean, it could have been hundreds on the other side, but not one person, not even one, has come up to me, like, I'm a citizen and you all are doing this all wrong, this is a nightmare, you really need to change it. I understand what you're saying, like, if it was a time certain, like 3 o'clock, open to the public's 3 o'clock, like, the world stops at 3 o'clock. Even today, I could almost get on board with that, but the problem is, I had a good idea last time and 100 people said, thanks but no thanks, but you're missing some other point. That's not what we want, we want you to keep it the same. So today, I'm prepared to say we need to keep open to the public the same. Or if there's a suggestion, like, hey, we could run this efficiently, and I'm just saying 3 o'clock, because I think you mentioned that. Like, 3 o'clock, that's open to the public, the world will stop, they can say whatever they want to say, they know what time to be here and then they can leave. I would say, I wouldn't vote on that today, because I want to get 200 more emails until January to make sure that the people that we represent think that that's a good idea. I know where everybody was coming from. I understand efficiency and we want to do things right. But I think at the end of the day, we all want to make sure that we're serving the public in the best way that we could serve them. So that's what I'm intending to do today. Thank you.
Commissioner Kennard, you look like you have something on your mind.
A couple of things, actually. Not that we didn't get a lot of emails over this. But if you want a lot of emails, talk about the New York Times. That's a lot of emails. That was a bunch, from all over the world. It was interesting. Anyway, my, my suggestion would be, given that the four of us that have already spoken seem to be in different places on this, I think the, the appropriate thing to do at this point would be to, to nix this ordinance as it's on the agenda today. If we want to come back with a discussion about changes to it, you know, give it, give it time to air out with, you know, with staff, with, with the public and then see if we need to make any changes at all. There's been some proposals that have been thrown out there from Commissioner Davis suggesting, you know, limiting it to X or, you know, my suggestion was, you know, get these other time certants out in front to get those folks out of the room or leave it as it is. You know, those are things that can be fleshed out rather than trying to make sausage from the dais, if you will.
I agree with Commissioner Kennard. I'd like to just forget what is on here today and vote that we, you know, go back to the drawing board and come up with something that everybody in our, we can all agree that it's a good place to be. And in the meantime, leave our agenda just the way it is for the beginning of the year till we can come up with something that everybody's comfortable with.
I'm sure. Commissioner Finnegan?
So if that, if we are leaving this alone today, because I'm sure it will come up, right now, I feel like the public waits quite a bit. And I don't know if that's you, but thank you, because it looks like we're back to time certants at 1:30. So, I mean, on a normal day, we don't have tons of people, so that works, right? The agenda works, it's open to the public, they've kind of wrapped it up by 1:30 and then, then we start. Today, it seems like people have a lot to say. So some days, that doesn't work and then, look, it's, it's 4:11, so says the clock on the back wall, which I think is accurate now. And we haven't, you all have had to wait, some people may have had to leave and we don't want that to happen, because if you've made the time to come here, it's important for all of us to hear you. So whatever happens here, I'm going to put out, for me, I don't know if everyone else, I'm sure everyone's happy to get the email, would it work better, you know, to have a open to the public time certain? So if we did do the proclamations and the time certants, would it work to make open to the public a time certain? Maybe we push it back to 3 o'clock. But I don't want to make a suggestion to be voted on, I won't bring that back. I do want to hear what works best for the public, because if we keep it the same, that's what you're asking for, but oftentimes you're still waiting quite a while. So I will open myself up to receive more email on any other suggestions. I'm asking you if you don't want it to stay the same. If you want it to stay the same, trust me, I've read all of your email. But if you want something different, I, I would like to hear that. Thank you.
When do we have a workshop scheduled for? Because this could be a good topic and we could flush it out.
We can schedule one. We don't have one right now. Can work on that.
I think that, you know, if we're going to put this, if we're going to throw this out for discussion, I, you know, there's lots of opportunities. I mean, we could have one meeting a month at 9:00 a.m. and the other one at 1:00 p.m. So you have different times of days, or different times of the day as an option. I mean, there's, I think, multiple ways that we can go with this and make it more efficient and let the public have some.
We can look at your calendars.
Madam Chair, I, I feel like we might, we might flush some of it out. I think some people are probably going to tell us what they want today. And then maybe others can, you know, if they want a different suggestion, can email us.
All right, so I get a consensus here that we're not going to take any action on this today and we're going to further that. Everyone's looking at me, I'm not quite sure why, but there's the AR and the ordinance, so I don't know.
Neither.
That's the only thought I had.
Do we need to take action and?
Just pull it. If y'all don't want to, to do it today, you would just pull that item. The whole thing.
Madam Attorney, we can pull the whole item?
Do we need a motion to pull or just a consensus to pull? No, you just don't, you're not going to hear item H5. Consensus, pull it?
Hang on a sec.
Open to the public and then the public will still be speaking on this, so.
As it stands right now, the public speaks after there's a motion and a second. So I think if, if this is not an ordinance, that the board has any intention of approving, then do we not need to kill it now? A motion and a second would then give the public a chance to speak on it.
Madam Chair? No, we haven't finished regular open to the public, so we cannot speak on this matter. And as soon as we're done with this, she's going to open up, open to the public, like, regular open to the public.
Okay.
Consensus to pull.
Pull.
All right.
Yes.
Madam Clerk? Do you have, okay. All right, now we're going to go open to the public. We're going to convene open to the public.
Okay. I'm Rhonda Warwick from Floral City area and I am here to speak today about Commissioner Kennard, about your willingness to eliminate the public comment period at the beginning of the meetings. And I just wanted to share some thoughts on that, that I've stood there for four hours to speak on this today. It's not what I, I mean, I had other things to do, but this is important. And it's difficult for elderly and disabled people and others to be forced to wait until the end of meetings or until an item comes up to speak at a commission meeting. And this shows us, the Citrus County citizens, that our comments are very low on your priority list. And how you proceed with this will verify your priorities. And I think the public, the voters should remember this in four years, when election comes up again, on how you prioritize public comments. And I wanted to read Proverbs 20 verse 8, or Proverbs 11:14, where there is, where no counsel is, the people fall, but in the multitude of counselors there is safety. And also Proverbs 20:18, plans are established by counsel, by wise guidance wage war. This verse is helpful because we're reminded that plans are established by counsel, that it's good to surround ourselves with others, particularly those who are wise. How are we, the Citrus County citizens, wise? There's a large number of us that through the fear, we have the fear of God and the fear of God is the beginning of wisdom. So we make plans in accordance with God's purpose and His will. Don't try to shut us out.
Thank you.
Taxpayers matter. Thank you.
Mary Cedar, I was not going to speak on this issue, because I know you guys know me. You know when I walk in the room, what already, what I, what I am, what I believe. So I wasn't going to speak on it. Do you know why I'm speaking on this today? Because, you know, there are a lot of people behind us who are managers and bosses. And you know what a manager does today? If they don't want you to work for them, they won't fire you because they have to pay, pay out. So what they do is they make life miserable for you. They give you the worst hours to work. They make you sit beside somebody you don't like. Whatever they can do to make your life miserable, you walk out the door. That's what I feel like you did to every one of these people today. I really feel like that today. You're trying to turn everything around to make it not easy for us to come and speak. And if we didn't care about the taxpayers and the monies we spend and what it would go to, we wouldn't be here.
All right, good afternoon. My name's Nick Holmes. I did send you guys an email earlier this morning. I don't know if you had a chance to review it, I know it's been a busy day for you. But I did want to come today to go ahead and request your assistance in helping a hardship that I think was inadvertently created when you guys passed a ordinance back in July, July 23rd. It's ordinance 2012-06 regarding the land development regulations for metal exteriors on single-family homes. I did bring my, my client with me today. I am a contractor. We have gone through this process for quite a while now. She actually purchased the property, I believe, sometime in 2022 because of the availability of metal exteriors. She was a former firefighter and has some affinity to non-combustible structures. We had a contract with her signed and dated in December of 2023 to go ahead and construct this home. She is a VA recipient, so the VA did take a little while to go ahead and get financing put together. But because of the nature of the actual construction, we needed to go ahead and get the metal building engineering prior to being able to submit for permit. So in order to do that, we have to go ahead and put down a deposit on that building to actually go ahead and produce that engineering. That took time after the VA. We didn't get that engineering until sometime later in June and then got the final engineering for the, for the actual full structure later in August. So we submitted for our permit actually in September. But most to me, we, we had an ordinance change that disallowed the building that we've been working for about half a year, trying to go ahead and get approved at that point. So what I'm coming here to ask for today, I know I've got limited time, so I want to kind of keep it short and, you know, bring the direct ask to you. I'd like this board to be able to go ahead and give some type of direction to your county administrator to work with his staff to allow for some type of variance process. When you guys passed that ordinance, we didn't really have any type of variance process in place. And in this particular instance, my homeowners home is being placed 135 foot off of the right of way. It's got a 90% opacity buffer. I've got a letter from the HOAs. It's got a 90% opacity buffer. I've got a letter from the HOAs saying that they all are aware of it and they approve it. And I'm happy to go ahead and submit all of these documents to your clerk showing kind of where it's at and what that area looks like. But it's on an unimproved road. And I don't believe that prohibiting a metal exterior necessarily goes with the nature of what the citizens were asking you guys initially when you went ahead and modified that. This area does have a number of exterior accessory structures that are metal, with metal exteriors as well. It kind of fits that neighborhood as it is. So I just want to go ahead and come and ask for your assistance and thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Hi there.
Hi. My name's Tamara Reed. I'm kind of emotional wellness. I, I'm a veteran. I'm an ex-firefighter, first responder. Went to Oklahoma City, okay? This is my first time building a house. I've had, owned property. I lived in Lutes for 20 years in the same house. So in, I, I had no idea that things could change like this. I started last September trying to figure out what kind of house. Okay, I'm, I'm an ex-firefighter. I don't want a pier and beam. I live in a cinder block house. Sorry, that's not my idea safe either, okay? As a firefighter and fighting fires and all kinds of, and from, I fought 20 years. I was resident 20 years in Texas, Amarillo, Texas. I was a professional firefighter, only woman out of 200, okay? So we learned construction. So when I decided that I wanted a barn dominium, because they're plentiful in Texas and Arizona, but here they're just starting up, finding comps for the VA to give me my VA loan, which I never used until now at 65 years old, and to be told that my dream house, my dream property that I looked for, for, I retired from the VA in 2015 as a quality, a quality manager at the James A. Haley in Tampa, okay? I never thought that things could change in the middle of things. Like I said, September, we started with him. We signed a contract in December. There, there was financing, January, February, March, I closed May 2nd. He got his draws to be able to do the engineering and seal the plans. October 22nd, your permitting department said no. I already have a new construction loan that I'm going to have to start paying two mortgages, the one in Lutes and the one here. But what am I supposed to do? I need a variance, some sort of variance process. I watched your meeting. The buildings you showed me were like warehouses. Mine's a house. It's going to be 20 feet wide and 60 feet long. The front, the front of it's going to be 20 feet long. And I have to put something on the front of that house just to please you guys? Come on. Your permitting department, they kept telling me it had to be all four sides. And then they changed it to, oh, it only has to be the front side. So what is it? I said, okay, can I put a screen on, screen porch on the front of it? No, it's still a metal exterior. So I have to put something over my metal exterior so that you guys would approve it. But you changed that in July, in the middle of my process, where I already have a $300,000 loan for a piece of property I looked for for years, came to Citrus County, and now I'm declined.
Thank you.
Okay, somebody needs to do something.
Thank you. Next, please.
Dr. Carmen Kubitschek in Vines Village 4. Commissioner Bayes, this question is for you. You had mentioned last meeting that you wanted the FDLE to send the letter back to AG. And I wanted to know what the status of that was. And also, we're coming on to, I think we're in 10 months since the letter actually went out to the AG first and then referred to FDLE. And I, we still haven't heard anything. I believe your attorney said that she had some communication with them. So I, I would like to know what the status is. The other thing I want to comment about the public, open to the public, I think having it early helps those that need to go back to work. I know that you want to have maybe two time certainties for open to the public. So the question I have is, will you be addressing after each session the questions that were posed to the, to the board? Or are you going to be waiting until the end of the, of the second time certain, open to the public? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Sharon O'Donnell, Beverly Hills. I'm here to talk about open to the public. Thank you so much, Ms. Vinickin, for being concerned about the 200 emails you received. My question is, and I don't know if it's already been addressed because I came late, but who's complaining about the length of the time? How much is it actually costing the county? How often does it happen that high people, high cost people are here? And can we look at the specifics of that? Because I don't even think the public knows those answers. I certainly don't. So it, most people are reasonable. So what, what, what is the problem? Why is it a problem? And then if there's exceptions to the rule, rather than change the whole thing, let's fix the exceptions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Aaron Hefty from Ozello, local fishing captain. First off, I want to start off with a thank you to Steve Howard and Jeff Kennard for helping us through the storm out there. Showed a lot of support to Ozello, and I appreciate that. I'm a little emotional too, because Ozello is an awesome place. And I feel like Florida is trying to get rid of old Florida, and, and it bothers me. I feel like you're pushing old Fish Camp out, and that's what Florida was built on. I don't know where you guys are from, but my family's from here. I think it's fair that you would give these people at least an opportunity, maybe to deem their homes historic. Why are we not able to do that in Ozello? We are, we're more historic than half of Crystal River or Ozello, or Home Assassin. So let's come up with a plan. Let us deem our homes historic if it's past a certain year. Let these people fix their homes. We know the 50/50 rule. We get it. We will do the appeal process and we will abide by your laws and rules. And we understand that the state pushes down on you guys. I think that if you would give some of these people that's been out there a chance, and not me and not the younger generation of people, but the people that in their 80s and 90s and, and these houses have been in their, their families for generations. I mean, Art Cannon's been there. He was, his fathers were there, Key Strange. I mean, it goes on and on, the DeBuss, the Stevenson's, the Browns. These people have been there for, before any U were born, you know? And that they've owned these properties. And I think that they should have the right to deem these either historic homes, so they do not have to have that process anymore. I mean, and I'm not asking for everybody, but we need to come up with a plan, some way to fix that. And I don't believe in assessing it from the street. I'm just going to tell you, I'm not a big fan of it. I understand that you don't have the manpower, but at the end of the day, that's not fair. It's not fair to assess somebody's home from the street. It's just not. You know, give these people a chance, because now these people have to go back and they have to pay for an appraisal and a contractor and this and that. And getting a contractor right now to show up at your house to give you an assessment, good luck. You know, I mean, I'm kind of the voice of Ozello. I don't know if you guys know who I am. But we got to fix this problem. We don't, we don't want to be the big homes. We don't want Home Assassin and Crystal River. We're Ozello, man. We want to stay Ozello. We want to stay old Fish Camp. You know, so we need to figure out, all of us need to figure out a way that we can make this happen, you know? I'm building a new house and guess what? Fish camp in the air, so.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Aaron, can you call him back up here again real quick?
Mayor Aaron, could you come back, please?
This is, this, this is out of, out of order, but I'm going to do it anyway. We've not had Aaron up here in front of the board to be recognized for his efforts after the hurricane, after Hurricane Helene and before Hurricane Milton. Before Milton was even an issue, I'm seeing that Aaron is out there mobilizing, I mean, massive numbers of volunteers. I show up out there once in a while and there's just a crowd of people there. They're, they're being fed. They're handing out supplies. They're tearing out walls. He and I were in frequent contact. I know he was in constant contact with Steve as well, figuring out a way to make it happen. Then once Milton was possibly bearing down on us, that ramped up things as well. So we haven't had a chance to formally thank you. Your efforts did not go unnoticed and hopefully at this point, not unrecognized. Thank you. The mayor of Ozello.
Thank you, guys.
I could just say one comment to do that, too. Not only did he do that for Ozello, but then he went into Home Assassin and other places as well. So his focus was just not Ozello. He did amazing work across the county and I applaud him for his efforts.
Please correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll sit down if this is open to the public. I've already had my first one, but if this is pertaining to the.
No, this is open to the public.
Okay.
Thank you. Sit down.
Mike Kirkland, Ozello. So Aaron pretty much covered everything I was going to talk about, you know? We have a house that's been, it's been from, built in the 55. So it's a block home. All the interior, interior walls are blocked. We have one wall that's 12 foot long. It's wood frame where the plumbing comes up. House completely stuck on inside. It's waterproof. Prior to the storm, we removed everything, hot water heaters, AC. There was nothing in the house, no damage. One front door and a window. You know, we received the letter, you know, just like everybody else did, you know? I'd love for a building fisher to come by and take a walkthrough. I got before pictures, after pictures. I got anything they need, you know? But there's a lot of people that don't have the resources or the money to get a contractor out there, you know, or to pay for the, you know, anything we need to get it done. So just listen to what Aaron has to say. He's a big word for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deb Spence, Crystal River. I'd like to talk about the idea of open meetings, open time for the residents. As you know, I speak here fairly frequently. And sometimes the early session is, is commandeered, if you will, by certain groups of people that can go on for 45 minutes or an hour. And I understand free speech, and they have every right to say what they want to say. But when it becomes disruptive, when it becomes time-consuming to everybody else sitting here, that needs to be addressed. And I think that's the real issue that we're talking about here, is why we want to change things. And I don't know what the answer to that is, but I personally have no problems doing away with the early session and only doing the late session. For anyone who wasn't able to speak earlier today, they got to listen to a whole lot of information about this county. And I think that's important. People come in here and they run in and they have their three minutes. They say what they want and they run out the door. But there were some excellent conversations going on today about how this government runs. And people should be aware of that. When it comes to the fact that there's 200 emails that come through on this out of 116,000 voters in this county, 200 isn't really a whole lot of things. And I think that we really need to look at the statistics of out of those 200, how many of them actually come and speak here? How many have spoken here in the last year? Because I've seen a lot of online stuff where people are getting all hyped up about this, but they're not the people who actually come and talk. And I think you need to separate that out. We talked at the ambulance session about their statistics and what does it all mean? And then we're making decisions here without any statistics. What does it mean? Do these people actually come in and speak? Or do you want to talk to the people who do speak? And what does it matter to them? Because I think that's a big difference that you have here. What we did today actually worked, I think, very well. We did a few in the beginning, a few in the middle, and a few at the end. But I have to say that some of the board discussions are going on and on and on, which is something that is new. And I think that we need to look at that as well. We're all allowed three minutes or five minutes to speak. And yet some of the commissioners can go on for 10, 15 minutes. And I think you may want to look at that as well as a way to curtail it. Our last meeting, I want to say I was out here at 3:30 because it wasn't a lot of public comment. Today, firestorm happened, and you knew this was going to happen. And I have to give you credit because very early in your chairmanship, you've actually created this firestorm that usually the commissioners take, oh, three or four months before they have the whole county up at arms about something. So I have to give you congratulations for that one.
Big three lap.
But yes, but I think that it, you have to go to the people who actually speak here and have an agenda issue. Because I think that we need the reports and we need to understand that you need to provide us the reports as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Barry Schwartz. I live in Ozello, out by Pirate's Cove. I can absolutely guarantee the incredible leadership Aaron has displayed, you know, over the last few months. I, this is, I'm a retired high school principal. I've been in many, many classroom situations. This is your classroom and I've observed many. I need to pass you a compliment, first of all, before I address my issue. I'm impressed. This, the first time I've seen this board, I'm impressed with your thoughtfulness. So I appreciate that. But what I'm here, because I have to go home and walk my dog, is to address the issue of Pirate's Cove. And Pirate's Cove has been on the BOCC radar since 2012. I've been attending, I don't know how many meetings about Pirate's Cove in this room for many, many years now. When there was, initially then, there was a proposal to build a four-story, 80-plus-room resort on, on that property. That change of land use was denied by the Board of County Commissioners at that time. Since then, the county has obviously undergone all kinds of massive change and growth. And I've heard a variety of commissioners talk about balancing growth while preserving the natural aspects of what makes Citrus County so special. There are many places where our county can support commercial growth and housing development. But there are a diminishing number of places that still qualify as old Florida with that special feel that makes Ozello so unique. And Aaron addressed that so well before. Adding Pirate's Cove to the existing boat ramp and passive park serves, not Ozello, it serves the entire community of Citrus County. The people in Ozello, we've got our backyards to go to, but it's, it's a treasure for the entire county. Not only that, it's for visitors. I walk past, I live out by the causeway, out by Pex. I walk past there every day and people talk to me. Even, I, I'd say almost half of them aren't even from Citrus County. They're visitors from all over the place that are coming out to that area every single day. I know working towards finding a way to add this property to the existing park makes sense financially. As adding the property tax of the few homes that could be built on that property pale in comparison to the money that is generated by the people who visit the property and ultimately spend money in Citrus County. And I know finances are a big burden that you have to, that you have to balance and you have to listen to. I live near the park and see 50 to 100 people using that park every single day. And that doesn't include the hundreds of cars that are at the boat ramp. I understand that there are many needs in Citrus County and it is your responsibility to balance them. But the people of this county have made it clear that preserving the nature coast is a high priority for them. Once development is allowed in the Pirate's Cove property, that habitat is gone forever. I urge you to continue and, and to help to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi there.
Hello, I'm Dean Bales from Home Assassin Florida and I'd like to talk about a couple of things. One, the Pirate's Cove, there's a lot of headwinds on buying property. I think it's a good idea. It's a primo piece of property. I remember one time I, I parked my truck at the existing park and went off canoeing and I come back and the tide had come up and I had like water up my wheels this high. I just floated my canoe right up to my truck. It's barely above sea level, if, if at all, depending on the time of year. But, you know, there's a lot of headwinds to buying, for people who want to build on a property. And, yeah, that property is for sale. The price has gone up since 2001. But, well, if you're looking to really build on a piece of property, you know, people who are, are holding on to it, they sell it to another investor who doesn't build on it. They sell it to another investor who isn't going to build on it. But ultimately, somebody's going to build on it. But the people that count the costs and, and want to do construction on something, they're going to choke at what's going. they're going to choke at what's going on. Insurance costs have gone up. Construction materials have gone up. Labor costs have gone up. Interest rates have gone up. You've got the 51% rule. The cost of demolishing a place that's been repeatedly flooded is also got to be calculated and, you know, the cost of elevating, you know, regulatory burdens are greater. It's kind of a good idea to buy that park, but it might be an idea that is coming up too soon. If you wait a little bit, that property could fall into your hands like a perfectly ripe fruit because they may realize what really is going on. When people start selling their property, left and right, who have been flooded out repeatedly, who also count the cost and say, "This is just, you're not worth the trouble." And they're going to move inland somewhere. That happened in the one-two punch of the mid-1990s when you had the storm of the century that flooded people out who said, "Ooh, look at that nice glittering ocean water. Let's get a house here." And then, they realize that glittering ocean will jump up and bite them. And then, the net ban about that time and people just moved out. They lost their occupation or they lost their zeal for living on that nice, pretty glittering water. But there's a lot of multiple punches going on right now. Just, my advice is just wait. Your opportunity to get that property at a better price may come in a few years' time when the full brunt of the problems that people are facing who live on the water, you know, when the chickens come home to roost and they realize, you know, "I can never build on this." It's the dream of, "It's out of my reach. It's a bridge too far." And you might be able to buy it at that time. And as for public discussion, you have someone quoted in the Bible that it's good to have wise counsel and a lot of counselors, but there's another one that should be the perimeter on the other end that says, "The more words, the less is said." And, yeah, there's a lot of people that just get up and ramble and it's like, "Oh, boy, I wish they'd just shut up." Well, that's my cue to shut up. I'm out of here. See ya.
Thank you.
I have a feeling frequently that's commissioners that are, that's being said about.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Steve Howard, wherever Steve went. Denise, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday.
Same to you.
And I encourage you all, you're welcome. I encourage you all to do the workshop on the public speaking. This county has, this county has a half a billion-dollar business. And I understand it's important in order to do business. Almost a year ago today, I will send you all a copy of this. I sent a letter to Steve Howard regarding how the FWC handles their meetings, which is in charge of all game in the state of Florida. All public and private land for all the game that's harvested in the state of Florida and mostly all the parks and stuff. FWC, they're all over the state of Florida. They do a marquee job on their organization of their meetings. They're usually one day or two days, mostly two days. If there's an agenda item, I'm going to get you a copy of all this. If there's an agenda item, you go over and sign up to speak on the agenda item and they have a whole list of who the speakers will be on that agenda item. And they go to the next agenda item and you speak if you want to speak on the agenda item. You can only speak if you sign up on the agenda item. At the end of their meeting, if you want to speak on anything you want to speak on that's not been on the agenda item, you're free to open up the door as you all do in the beginning. I've been here a long time and I know what happens when people get up and speak. Mostly people very positive, a lot of people very negative, et cetera, et cetera. That's just the rule of thumb. But when somebody gets up there and starts personally attacking this commission or the staff or the county attorney, you wear that comment for the rest of the day, whether you admit it or you don't. So, I think it's important for people to speak what they want to speak, freedom of speech. I also think it's important for people to speak on the agenda item and not just get up here and talk about this, that, and the other. We have staff, we have county administrator. I'm looking forward to participating in your workshop. I think it's a great idea. But God bless all of you. Merry Christmas. Be safe to your family. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, for the record, can I have him state his name?
He didn't tell us his name.
Yeah. I know we all know. Sir, Dixie, Dixie, Dixie.
There was that masked man.
Dixie, Dixie. Can you come back to the mic and tell us who you are for the record?
Santa Claus. And Santa Claus didn't bring any milk, he didn't bring any eggnog, he didn't bring anything, but I heard rumor there might be, I can't say this, maybe there's a cookie in the back room. I don't know. Dixie Hollins.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. God bless all of you.
Those were yours? Thank you.
Any more open to the public? All right, closed. Board members, we have a lot to get through our agenda and we have a 5:01.
I'll take a quick stab at it. Quick, quick, putting glasses on. I don't even think the guy from Lee's from Club Recovery is here, so I didn't, I was just going to ask maybe staff could work with him on that. I'm glad the Ozzella people came, resilient people. Obviously, we can't start making decisions on the dais and I think that they understand that and that they just want to be, that they just want to be heard. Thank you. Same with Mr. Holmes and I didn't catch the lady's name, the firefighter. When, I just want to tell everyone, when you send us email the morning of a board meeting, maybe some others, like, I read all my email late night, first thing in the morning, but on board meeting days, we were in meetings this morning and, but I promise you, I will read it. And if there's anything that can be done, I'm sure that many of us will talk to staff. About open to the public, I'm sure we'll talk about that more later, but there were something that I did like and something that I can't agree, I can't, I can't agree with that 100 or 200 emails doesn't mean anything and it depends on who shows up. If nobody's ever spoken at an open to the public and they're a taxpayer and they want it changed or they want it to the same, that's important because that's their right. Maybe one day, they will want to show up and you would be shocked, I was shocked, when I was elected, the number of people that actually watch these meetings from home. So, they may not be sitting here, but they are still actively involved in their community. One thing, actually, Mr. Lebrillo said that I do like and we'll probably run that past the attorney leader, just putting you on notice for that. He said, "Not under the jurisdiction of the board." And I wrote that down, which I thought was pretty clever because I know during election times, some people are not addressing, they're talking to us about nothing that we would address. I remember a certain person that would come up and talk about our state representative at the time. I'm thinking, "Why is this allowed? This has nothing to do with the board, nothing." So, maybe we could look into that because there's so many people that have things that want to talk to us about things that we can actually take care of. So, that's all. Quick.
Thank you. All right. I gave you a chance. We're going to go to regular business. Board members.
Madam Chair, motion approved, item E1A through U. And we need to discuss, I believe, our road resurfacing contract is in there with Superior, right?
And clerk, just on that, E1O was pulled. I believe that was additional information. Okay. You're right. Thank you. Jeff, which one was, did you want to discuss?
Yeah, I think we pulled out, I'm going, I'm going to make a motion to approve it naturally, but I think it's, it's too big of a deal just to flop it in with the rest of the bids.
Yeah, E1B.
Yeah.
Okay.
I second his motion to approve everything, E1A through U, with discussion on E1B first.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Chair, so I can get clarification, are we pulling E1B for discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Take it away. Oh. Any public comment? You're good to go. You want to discuss anything? You want to bring anything up?
We want to vote on this one first and then we'll...
Yes. Okay. So, we have a motion by Kennard, a second by Barrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're one, all right.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to pull E1B just for the public's edification, I guess, that this board is serious about addressing road resurfacing. This is the second year in a row that we've approved over a $13 million budget for county road resurfacing. So, I would be more than happy to make the motion that we approve item E1B.
We have a motion, motion by Kennard, a second by Finnegan. Any further discussion?
Yeah, if any resident would like a copy of the roads that are proposed to be resurfaced, please email me and I will send you a copy that you can read. And for those people in District 3, I have copies that I've highlighted so you know if you lived in Pine Ridge or Citrus Springs or Beverly Hills, what roads are going to be done with the resurfacing money. Thank you.
Is there any public input on E1B? Seeing none, we'll close to the public. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And...
Madam Chair, can you forgive me for being completely out of line?
Sure.
We're going to be stopping again, time certain, at 5:01. I was just, I would love to get out of this chair because we talk about efficiency. I don't think the people at 5:01 want to wait, but we can do our business after.
Okay.
If that's okay, if the board agrees.
That's fine. Can we catch up with you for E1A through...
You.
You.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I know he asked not for special treatment, but Attorney Batzel's been here. Is there any way we could do his real quick before? I apologize, but talking about those folks that are on the clock. What is the... It's E13. And I will tell you, he asked me not to mention it to you. Okay. But now that we're going past 5:01. All right, we're going to do E13 and then, we're going to take a comfort break.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn, for the candor. I really did ask her not to do this. So, Rob Batzel, 1531 Southeast 36th Avenue, Ocala, Florida, 34471. Here on E13, very quickly, you may recall approving transmittal of this text amendment back in June. We have work to do and discussions to have with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Congressman Billy Ruckus's office is actually assisting us to get that audience and then, we will be coming back. But because of the statutory 180-day deadline, we just need your consent. We'll then send a joint letter to the state to let them know that we are seeking an extension. It's automatic and that'll give us another 180 days to have those discussions and then, come back before you when it's fully baked.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, motion approved, item E13, A and B.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passions, 5:0. How long do y'all want?
Till 5:01?
All right, we're going to convene for six minutes.
I don't know if that's what any of you all want.
A recess, I'm sorry. Recess. Jeez. I'm stuck. All right, it's 5:01. We have time certens. We still haven't finished regular business. Jeff, how do you feel about knocking out regular business because we still have staff here? Can we do that? Yep. All right. We're going to rifle through regular business because we still need to get this out of the way. So hang tight for just a minute. We've still got two commissioners out of the room, but...
You have a quorum.
I have a quorum. All right, what do you guys want to pass? Hurry.
Madam Chair, motion approved, item E2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We... That was to my right. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we're gonna call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
E2. We're gonna get through this because we got people stacked up in the back of the room. We gotta get this done. Okay, 5-0. Oh, E2. It's just budget transfers. Okay, 5-0.
Madam Chair, motion approved, item E3.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
5-0.
Madam Chair, motion approved, item E4, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Kennard, second by Davis. Any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. E5, final A-P-A-R-P-A.
Motion to approve E5.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Finnegan. So used to saying Kennard down there. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. E6.
Motion to approve E6.
Second.
We have a motion by Davis, a second by Kennard. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E7, A, B, and C.
Second.
Do you have something?
No, second.
Okay. A motion by Kennard, second by Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, E8, A, B, and C.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kennard.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion to approve, E9, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Kennard. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E10.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion to approve, E11, A and B.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Finnegan.
Madam Chair, real quick, just for the public that's following along, this money, the, was it 331-227, that comes out of the enterprise fund. That does not come out of the general fund. So this is money that comes from permitting fees that will be paying for these positions.
And that's not just positions, that's all the capital expense to support those positions.
And I wanted to say something also, if that's possible.
Pardon me, vote yes.
I keep saying we need more inspectors. And I'm really glad to see, and I told Mr. Landon that I was glad to see that we're finally gonna get two more. We need more. We have money in that enterprise fund and it needs to be used for this county by the building department. And I'm gonna hopefully get Mr. Landon on board and we'll get a few more people. Because we need to inspect what is being built. We have a lot of projects going through. And that means it needs to have a lot of inspection and have it done, have the things built properly. And I really think this is wonderful, so I'm gonna approve this.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. We've already asked for public input from the, and there was none, so we're gonna call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
5-0.
Motion approved, E12, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Barrick. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E13, A and B.
We already did that one.
I'm sorry. Hello, motion approved, E14.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Commissioner Barrett.
I went over this yesterday and discussed it. There needs to be some things done before we can approve something like this. Okay, first of all, each district should be entitled to get one-fifth of the monies collected. Okay, because each district may do their own beautification with these funds, okay? Such as District 3, we already have two MSBU's that do a beautification. And that money should be able to be given back to the citizens of District 3 that paid the MSBU, okay, that's collected for beautification. So there needs to be more before we bring this before the board and vote on it because it hasn't been completely thought through. Okay? These funds would be distributed annually. These are things I thought of, okay? These funds would be collected from October the 1st through the June 30th, from the fiscal calendar. And if you go by this year's amount, each district should get $13,700, okay, for beautification. That's if we do, if we set it up right. The way it's set up now, it doesn't say who's gonna get the money for the beautification. It's collected from everywhere. It should be distributed between all five districts, okay, evenly. All right, the district commissioner that is seated on the board on the October 1st would decide where the funds would be spent for beautification of their specific district. So if we had this in place, the money would have been given out October the 1st and Commissioner Schlebo would have said, okay, the beautification goes here, the money goes here. I'm not opposed to us taking the money and using it for beautification. But what I'm saying is, it needs to have more into this than just, we're gonna take the money and we're gonna beautify. Who decides where we're gonna beautify? Who decides what we're gonna beautify?
Commissioner Kennard.
Commissioner Barrett, I completely disagree. We did away with the districts for park impact fees, specifically for the same reason I'm gonna give you on this one, is that the park impact fees by district would amount to pennies. That essentially gives you enough money in your district to replace the garbage cans at the park. So we went to a county-wide district for park impact fees, so the quantity of money, the amount of money building there is enough to do a meaningful project. You can take that money and do a large project in District 3 or in District 5. You're not gonna be able to do a large project in each district each year, but it allows you to do large, meaningful projects. This beautifying Citrus County is the county, it's not districts. And we should be building a large sum of money there to go into one of the districts and be able to do a meaningful project, not just simply planting a few plants. So I'm ready to support it. I'd like to see us move forward.
I disagree with you. In my district, I have two.
Commissioner Barrett? Okay, I'll wait. Are you finished, Commissioner Kennard?
I'm finished.
All right. Commissioner Finnegan?
Thank you. I'm tongue-tied. Good loopy, it's getting late. Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kennard. So if we can remember, beautify citrus was my strategic plan. That's my project, so I'm very passionate about this. And the plan was, which we had all talked about on a different board, you weren't there, when I brought it out, was signs coming into our county. There was a survey that went out with some ideas that, it's been several months now, maybe some flowers around that. And I'm not gonna, we have a long meeting and that can wait till next month, till I talk a lot more about this project because I'm passionate about this. But Commissioner Kennard nailed it. We cannot break it into districts. We will never beautify citrus. And every district is not going to have a "Welcome to Citrus County" sign. Some places are gonna have some extra Wayfair signs that are gonna look nice. I've been talking with staff a lot about this. There are some good ideas, but when you start breaking it into districts, it messes up everything. And I realize that Homosassa will maybe get some things, but maybe not as much as Inverness. The first place, when we had talked about the wildflower program, because I've been working on this, it was 44. That's not my district, it's their districts. But that's okay, because I'm still the commissioner in this county and that made sense first. The second wildflower project may happen on Homosassa Trail and that would encompass my district. But we can't start thinking in district, we need to start thinking in larger projects within the county. And I hope that everyone will be receptive to talk about this a lot more in January. So thank you for supporting us. Please, board.
Commissioner Davis?
I'm good.
Okay. I respectfully agree with my two colleagues, one to the right and one at the other end, the ball-headed guy down there. I think this is a great project. This is also something that I think we can talk at in a workshop. I think there, I have some other ideas too, but I'm really looking forward to us getting a tree canopy ordinance, so... Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes 4-0.
Motion approved, E15.
Second. Excuse me, Chair. Clarification, that was 4-1.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Kennard, motion, Finnegan, were you the second?
Yes.
Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. E16.
Motion approved, E16.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, E17, A and B.
Motion by Kennard.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. E18.
Motion approved, E18, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Kennard. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion to approve, E19.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E20, A and B.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E21.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. E22.
Motion to approve, E22, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public input? Seeing none.
Chair. Clarification, that was Finnegan correct.
I said Kennard.
You made the motion, didn't you?
They both did at the same time.
I think Kennard and I seconded it at the same time.
It was Finnegan that made the motion.
I'm sorry, you're right, okay. So Finnegan made the motion, Kennard seconded it. How's that?
It is the speed round.
Yes. No public input, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E23.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E24. A, B, C, and D.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Davis. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion to approve, E26, A, B, and C.
Second.
Which one?
Chair?
Yes.
Or an E25, correct.
That's what I thought.
We're on E25. Yeah, that's why you confuse me.
I was ready for E26.
Are you done? Or do you want to leave your motion for E25? We're on E25.
You want me to make a motion for E25?
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion, we approve E25.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barrett, a second by Commissioner Davis. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Now you can do 26.
Motion to approve, E26, A, B, and C.
Second.
Oh yeah, a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Davis. Any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E27, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion to approve, E28.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Barrett, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E29.
Second.
Commissioner by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public input? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E30, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion to approve, E31.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Barrett, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E32, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E33, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Barrett. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E34.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any public input?
And Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Yes ma'am.
So Bob Reeder-Miller pointed out that apparently due to people not understanding the English language, the dictionary has now updated it to have two meanings for bi-monthly. By bi-monthly, we mean every other month. Semi-monthly is half a month. So this is every other month. And then, secondly, the board is getting full financials and marketing reports on the off months by email. Just to make that be clear in the record.
Thank you. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Madam Chair, motion approved, item E35 and 36, additional TDC items.
Second.
Feeling frisky down there, Kennard?
Yeah. So we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard and seconded by Commissioner Finnegan on both E35 and E36. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor of E35?
And 36? Aye.
E36? Aye.
The motion was both, so...
Gotcha, all right. Want to make sure we don't get hung up on technicality.
Motion approved, E37, A, B, and C.
Second.
Oh, let me throw mine in. I'll give it to Commissioner Barrett. Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Barrett. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, E38.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Davis. Any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Motion approved, E39. Or no, that's just an update, never mind.
I think we have to provide guidance. Instruction.
Ah, got it.
So, how do you?
I thought we had given guidance.
Sure. I don't know how you want to handle this. Um, I know that uh, our new warden's leaving. We're getting another warden. Um, I like him very much. I just want to reiterate how wonderful he's been to this community. Um, with the hurricanes, I have uh, every hope that they're going to get us where we need to be, but until then, it's time to reinstate the fines. And I said after six months and another three months, it's been nine months, that um, they would need to go to the, the full amount allowed by um, would it be our administrative regulation?
By the contract, I think.
Our contract, our contract. Thank you. So, yeah, it, it's time. They, they knew I would say that, and I have the utmost respect for him, but it's time to reinstate those fines. They're, they're gonna have to figure it out as a business. Um, I've said that to him. They understand. I'm not saying anything up here, not blindsiding them. I'm encouraging them do something at a business level and, and fix this. And I have every hope that they will, but um, it may go to levels higher than them, and when it costs money, they take action, so. I think nine months was very gracious from this board.
Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am.
Have, have I just completely lost my memory on this? Because I could have sworn we were looking at this again in January.
No.
It was this month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Board members, any other comments? So we're reinstating the fines at the full allowable amount? Is that your motion?
Uh, yes, I can make a motion to that effect.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan. We have a second by Commissioner Barrick. Is there any public comment? Come on up, short timer.
Yes ma'am, uh, Jason Snow, warden at Citrus County Detention Facility. Um, yes, we have had discussions. Uh, again, I would uh, implore you, I can't, I can't, I can't change the past. I can just look to the future and, and what the future of Citrus County Detention Facility looks like. Uh, changing the culture is gonna take us uh, some time, but we're going in the right direction, and we have been uh, since we've made some uh, pretty pertinent changes. Coordinating with the uh, contract monitor has been very integral in some of those changes. He's, he's been a, a, a very good uh, sounding board for uh, where we need to go with our staffing. And we're gonna continue to push forward, even though I'm leaving. Uh, the leadership is not, is not leaving. You know, those, those changes and, and those things that we're looking forward to, uh, our percentages are increasing. I would ask that you consider in the future as well, though, uh, something Ms. Finnegan uh, talked about today. We don't, we don't put staff in place just for them to stand around uh, waiting for something to happen. And that's, that's a key factor in what affects our staffing percentages at the facility. When we have things that happen, additional med runs, additional court runs, those things. So, those are, those are not factored in whenever the rosters are produced and we staff our facility, and those things occur. Uh, we just uh, ask that you consider those things and look in the future at considering uh, some of the things that we submitted uh, as far as what I, what I call pool posts. Uh, posts that we can collapse, uh, that don't affect those percentages and don't affect the fines. So, uh, I also want to take the opportunity to thank the county for the quick response in uh, getting the boiler uh, up and running. Uh, that had been uh, down for a while and uh, getting heat to the facility, so thank you for that as well.
Well, we wish you the best in your endeavors, whatever those may hold for you, and wish you and your family a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you as well.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Motion approve E forty.
Motion by Commissioner Davis. Second by Commissioner Bayes. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. E forty-one.
Motion approve E forty-one.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. E forty-three.
We already did that one.
Forty-four.
Motion approve E forty-four.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any public input? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Alright, now five oh ones. We're back on track in twenty-six minutes. T one.
We have an ordinance to read. No problem, not, not pushing yet, just.
I'm getting there.
Know why we're looking at you.
Seems to be the theme. Conduct a public hearing. Uh, we're gonna read an ordinance. We're gonna read it. We've done a few of those today. Uh, Commissioners, at the conclusion of this uh, hearing, you're going to be asked to adopt an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending ordinance number two thousand twelve dash oh six. The Citrus County Land Development Code as amended relating to the State Road forty-four interchange management area by amending section fifteen hundred definitions and adding a new section twenty-four twenty-five. State Road forty-four mixed-use district and new sections thirty-seven ten through thirty-seven sixteen development standards for the State Road forty-four mixed-use, forty-four MU, district providing for severability, providing for conflicts of law, providing for codification, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. Do I need to do the comp plan too?
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, no, there's no comp plan. This is just our, uh, LDC.
Thank you.
So Commissioners, this is actually to adopt the Land Development Code updates to the forty-four mixed-use area. You have already seen the comp plan. This is a long time coming. Um, the county consulted with Wade Trim. Um, they've worked on this tirelessly, done a fantastic job with staff's opinion on this particular item. There were many citizen meetings. There were um, PDC workshops. There's been workshops with this board periodically. Um, I think I told you at the comprehensive plan, when you adopted that, that we actually had a presentation at the state uh, planning conference on this project because it was work with our county, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Conference, and Wade Trim. Got a lot of positive feedback on that. Those are are at least two entities that we definitely need to work with more, um, besides Wade Trim, but uh, the Regional Planning Conference was very instrumental in initiating this. So um, I know they have a presentation prepared. If you want to hear it, you've seen most of this before, um, on the workshops that we brought to you before. Um, we've got some great input too, from the Builders Association. You have a letter in your packet, and I see Mr. Hall is here. Um, Attorney Stillwell represents a lot of landowners. He's also been providing uh, updates constantly, and you'll see his comments in there that I think we've all addressed the concerns. So, um, the PDC did recommend approval on this application.
And we have a presentation available if you'd like to hear it. Otherwise, we are available to answer questions. It's up to the board's discretion.
Board members, what's your pleasure? Alright.
Would you like to hear a present?
No, I think we're just gonna go straight to the public.
Open to the public. I think he's saying, sit down.
Very good. Thank you.
So we're gonna go ahead and open this up to the public. Anyone that would like to speak on this agenda item, please step forward. Well, except for Clark Stillwell, because I, I think he's retired, isn't he?
This is one project that kept me out of retirement. Thank you very much. Uh, good evening. For the record, my name's Clark Stillwell. I represent State, State Road forty-four Land Trust. The State Road forty-four Land Trust owns thirty acres of general commercial property. To give you the physical location, if you were to get off Sun Coast Parkway and take a left at Crystal River, it would be the first thirty acres on the right, approximately a hundred yards from the interchange management area. I've been working on this since the designation of the uh, Sun Coast Parkway Interchange Area. My client acquired this property in the late nineteen seventies. It was an unrecorded subdivision and approximately twenty units. He uh, by his own admission was a land freak. He bought a lot of land everywhere, just on speculative air, uh, type investments. And he might have hit a home run here, I don't know, but what we did, once it was designated for the interchange area, we took the property and rezoned it three times into commercial, uh, three times, ten acres apiece, each time it was approved by this board. Uh, this thirty acres is the second largest piece in the IMA area. The piece across to the south of forty-four with the big white house up on the hills, about forty acres. The Morton piece which you added into this project is approximately eighteen acres. And there's an eight acre piece just to the west of this piece. So, uh, four large pieces of property in the interchange management area and a lot of small pieces. Uh, I attended all of the workshops. I made multiple comments, like I do. They were well received, and I, I was uh, quite pleased with that. The forty-four interchange management area is totally different than Cardinal. I think you realize that. Cardinal's a rural area, and all of a sudden, you know, they had this interchange there. This was an area that has a lot of commercial development, uh, a lot of office-type development pre uh, the designation of the interchange area, and it was transitioning. It, it is, as we discussed in the workshops, a the doorstep, if you will, to Citrus County. The recognition was that it was gonna be much more commercial, you know, in type of uses. As I stand here today, I can tell you that Avis Craig, a professional land use planner, has reviewed these Land Development Code regulations. Paul Gibbs, an architect who you well know, has done a lot of quality work, has reviewed these land development regulations, provided input. And we've all gotten uh, positive feedback. The consultants have been very professional to work with, uh, which was a nice change. Frankly, uh, Cardinal was a little different. So I can tell you, as I stand here tonight, on behalf of my client, we're satisfied with this work product. It's a good piece of work product, a few basics. Every development, I mean, almost every development, unless it's a minor development, is gonna do a PUD, so you're gonna see it again. And within the framework of these Land Development Code regulations, you have architectural standards that exceed your LDC, you have buffering standards that exceed your LDC, you have sign st- standards that exceed your LDC, and you have height standards that exceed your LDC. So, we'd ask you to approve it. It's been a long tedious, multiple meetings, and we'd like to put it to rest, move on. Do you have any questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to speak? I think you enjoyed hitting that button, Janet. I think you enjoyed that.
He was speaking from the public, just like I'm gonna give.
I enjoyed that he said he supported it.
Just wait, it's gonna go again too. Just wait, Gaston, I'm gonna do Gaston too.
Gaston Hall representing the Citrus County Builders Association. We've also attended all the meetings. We agree with the final process, is ready to go, and we hope you approve it as is. Any questions?
You want to give some of your time to Clark?
Hey, Janet, Janet wants to.
Seconds to go.
She didn't get to beep you. No, she just wanted to beep you.
I was gonna let it go. I gave you five minutes.
No, I've got five minutes left.
Is there anyone else from the public? Seeing none, we'll close open to the public. We are on T one.
That's what we were just.
We had, we had it. Oh, no, I mean, we're on T one right now. We haven't got to the second public. Sorry. Alright, board members.
Madam Chair. Based on competent substantial evidence, I'd make a motion that we approve OA two zero two four dash zero 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 one.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Davis.
Madam Chair, I have a question about this.
Commissioner Barrick, you are recognized.
I read through all these lovely pages. The only thing I didn't see, we're in the twenty-first century. Where are the EV stations? And are they going to be solar EV stations? Are they gonna be covered? Is there a special area they're gonna be at? If we're gonna be doing a unit like this, I think they should be somewhere in there.
And I'll answer that one. Right now, we don't have that in our code. That is something that we need to look at. They're starting to think about more. We don't have it required right now because it's not required anywhere in the county, but we do need to think about that for the Land Development Code. Agreed? Starting to see more.
We will try and get that into the code.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Uh, T two was canceled. We're on to T three. PUD twenty-six forty-six, Todd Pressman for Shavari, the applicant. Commissioners, at the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County Land Development Code Atlas map to establish a new master plan, a planned unit development for multifamily uses in the medium-density residential and professional services office districts, providing for applicability, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And I believe the applicant is here for their presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Todd Pressman, two hundred, second Avenue South, number four fifty-one in St. Petersburg. Pleasure to be up here this evening. Mr. Hockadill, you're going to run the PowerPoint for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If we could begin that, please. Uh, so this is PUD twenty-six forty-six. Uh, we're located on Sun Coast uh, roadway between Grover Cleveland and West Cardinal. Next slide, please. This is the site as it's proposed, uh, from the proper phaser. Next slide, please. And a little bit closer, you can see uh, the location and the configuration of the site. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the uh, site plan, which is proposed for a hundred and fifty-six uh, units. Uh, we are proposing and ask for consideration of a condition that one-third of the units be for affordable. Affordable housing is a very important element in all of our communities, and this is a proposal that would include at least a minimum of thirty percent or one-third affordable housing. Next slide, please. Um, it's designed with really outstanding amenities. It would be a wonderful community. As indicated, a hundred and fifty-six apartment units, dog park, gym, pool amenity, uh, center. There are some garages that are also proposed, pickleball courts, that's the big rage. And we've added in and included a lot of wetland areas as scenic areas with a lot of outdoor pathways. Next slide, please. Uh, this is just a couple of close views. Uh, you can see the ponding and the stormwater, along with uh, winding walkways and pathways throughout the facility. Next, next slide, please. This is just another zoom in. You see a couple of the units. You can see, again, the winding pathways, which is really a center point around the wetland areas and storm water areas. Next slide, please. Now importantly, Madam Chair and Commissioners, under looking at your future land use map, the area is currently MDR. There's no change there. It's consistent and compatible with the MDR category. Next slide, please. And looking at your zoning is the same, uh, which is a, a little bit hard for me to read, but the zoning as well, uh, density level and category is the same. There's no change. We're seeking to do, of course, the master plan, uh, PUD. Next slide, please. Per your staff report, the applicant is proposing a density of seven point eight seven units per acre, which is less than the maximum allowed density of eight units per acre and the ten units per acre in the MDR and PSO categories. Next slide, please. Per your staff report, the land area proposed for the use meets the standards outlined within the comp plan. The number of dwelling units is within the maximum allowable limit, and the proposed ISR and FAR, impervious surface ratio, floor area ratio, are less than the maximum allowed. Next slide, please. Submental history, we worked with Mr. Hockadill. I have to commend him and his staff. He worked really long and hard with them. We originally had submitted for three hundred ninety-two units. That was just too large and just too big. So, we So we revised the plan, revised summital, and it is now brought in at 156 units at 60% decrease of requested density. Next slide, please. Under your housing element, in your comp plan, notes, provide a variety of decent, safe, sanitary housing in vital neighborhoods to meet the needs of the population and future residents of Citrus County. Next slide, please. And another objective, which is to increase, or specifically townhouse and attached housing, encourage the development of well-planned, attractive, functional townhouse attached housing, including owner and rental units located near jobs, shopping and medical facilities. Next slide, please. Now, one of the critical elements is that the site includes the coastal high hazard. And your critical element of addressing the critical of the coastal high hazard is evacuation times. So we hired Wei Engineering, which is a premier transportation firm, and asked them to look at the issue. Next slide, please. And they determined in a study, which is part of the record, next slide, please, that the increase for evacuation would be from 960 minutes to 963.7 minutes. So that's only a 3.7 minute increase of evacuation time. And the conclusion was that based upon the information presented in the tables, which are part of the record, in the event evacuation, the Mary Lane development will be able to safely evacuate while not negatively affecting the evacuation route, which is the critical element in your comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. So in terms of the specific evacuation time, that would be 4.8 minutes. There's a number of different categories. One was the three minutes. This would be 4.8 minutes difference in evacuation. Next slide, please. And in regard to shelter evacuations, it would, that is the 3.7 minutes. Thank you. Next slide, please. And just some of the tabled information, that's part of the record. Next slide, please. Now, one other element of concern that's pointed out by your staff are buffers. In terms of proposing a 10-foot type A buffer, but we placed the stormwater and wetland or the stormwater areas, which provide at the property line, as you can see in the north, provides a much larger buffer than typically would be required by code. Next slide, please. And buffers, as well as you can see here, because of parking and landscaping and other elements far exceed the A buffer. Next slide, please. So Madam Chair and Board members, this would be an outstanding, affordable minimum, one-third, which is what we're targeting for apartments, which is always a desired residential use. We've looked closely at the concerns of your staff. We feel that we've addressed them quite well. We ask for your consideration and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Board members, do you have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none at this time.
Excuse me?
None at this time?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to go ahead. Sorry.
I was just getting ready to. Good evening, Joe Hockadell, Principal Planner of Land Development. This application is proposing to change, or excuse me, to establish a master plan on the subject property. As you can see here, the property is about 19 acres in size. And it has a little piece there that connects to US 19 as well as another piece there that connects to Nob Hill Terrace. The property is currently zoned medium density residential with a little bit of professional service and office down in the southeast corner there. And here's a copy of the master plan. Mr. Pressman explained the different things they're proposing. 156 units, multiple amenities on the site. As far as concurrency goes, they do have access to central sewer and they are proposing to provide central water with onsite facilities. There are some deviations being requested as part of this. One of them is they are proposing one access point for an arterial or a collector roadway, which the Land Development Code does typically require two for projects with as many units as they have. They are also proposing 25-foot wetland setbacks in some areas where typically 35 is required. A 10-foot type A where abutting residential, where projects of this size typically are required to have a type D buffer with a wall. And there are some portions of the project that appear to have more than 10 contiguous parking spaces without landscaping. And so while there are some aspects of this that meet Land Development Code and comp plan, they're really, the kicker here is that they're proposing a multifamily project in the coastal high hazard area. And so the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code have several policies and language that prohibit this type of development in the coastal high hazard, especially if they have any negative impact to evacuation times, which while the study provided says that it's not a negative impact, it does increase evacuation times even if it's by a few minutes. And so this project does violate the comprehensive plan with the location that it is proposed. And the Planning and Development Commission did recommend denial of this application unanimously at the October 17 PDC hearing.
Thank you. Board members, you have any questions of staff? Seeing none? Thank you. We'll open it up to the public. Anybody that would like to speak regarding this application, please step forward. Say your name and your address for the record and fill out a greeting card. You'll have three minutes.
Not a public speaker, but I'll get through it.
You'll do that.
Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak on this subject. I'll get right to it. My main issue is flooding. There's five, six lots at the end of the road. And the east lot that they own, they're outstanding in water year round. Year round. I mean, it might dry up for a month. Is the development going to have any drainage towards 19? Because it's already a swamp. A pond gets full and overflows. That's the reality of it. Traffic, they've, the speed limit now on 19 is 55 miles an hour. So you know they're going 60, whatever. The Chevron Station is the only entrance and exit into the neighborhood residential area. They have one exit onto 19, but you're trying to pull out there and then they're coming 60 miles an hour right at you, no traffic lights. Probably for at least a half a mile in either direction. So traffics, I don't know about all these minutes, but I know I have to wait a lot of times. But I'm retired and I don't care. It is a habitat for gopher turtles. And somebody's got to look out for them. Anyway, that's all I have. I'm just very concerned about flooding because this area is very wet at the end of Otter Street. I didn't get no buzzer.
You still have a minute and a half, or a minute and 30 seconds to talk.
I do, okay. Well, again, thank you for letting us speak and say, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too. Good evening.
I'm Philip Olmer. I live at 7673 West Pedersen Loop, which is an extension of Otter, West Otter. And appreciate you letting us talk on this. We went before the zoning commission about a month or so ago. And so I guess around two. But this is basically what Steve here mentioned before, is flooding. My lot itself hasn't flooded, although I have paid flood insurance, but it hasn't never flooded. But the lot next to me, which I own, water does sit there for about a week after any major storm or heavy rains. It'll sit there two or three days. There's coyotes out there, turtles, you name it, armadillos. And I know the turtles are supposed to be protected, but there's a lot of them roaming around there. Flooding is a major issue and traffic. The flooding, like I said, that water goes out there now. They're going to put up buffers. That's going to stop them going there. Where's it going to go? Sit right in our yard instead of for a week, for a month, I guess, whatever. It's not going to have any place to go. When they built the road, Pedersen Loop and Otter Street around there, they built it up. So there's no way for the water to get out of there. It just can't cross that road. So now it'll be more water forced into that area. It won't have any place to go. The traffic, again, going out on 19, the last two mandatory evacuations, took me a good while once I got to 19 to turn right at the post and pack right there, which is the only exit from there. We have to cross Mary Lane and all that. It's the only exit out of that subdivision. Took me forever to get on it. And when I got on it, I was a dead stop. At 156 households, which is going to be more than 156 cars or trucks, trying to get out that same exit, we're going to sit there. And hopefully it won't flood and flood us out while we're sitting there waiting to get on 19. It's already too slow through there all the way, Cruz Crystal River, which you're all, everybody's going north. So like I said, it's just, it's too crowded in there traffic wise now with that one exit. Unless they plan on making some more exits, not putting buffers up and letting it flood them instead of us. It's less, it's just an idea of I spent 20 years in Army. I came here, I'm originally from Palm Harbor. I was born and raised there. Came back, tried to get a nice piece of property where I could live. And it seems like now there's already homeless people out there, all out in those woods and swamp. You're out there, you got them roaming around. They used to cut through until I put a big fence up there, spent effort in doing it. Where are they going to go? I mean, I know the county has some money to help them and shelters and this, that and the other. But that's where they're at. I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Stephen Schwartz, Pine Ridge. I agree with the two gentlemen. I would also like to know when we're going to revise our flood zone map now that we're getting to a point where storms are a lot stronger. Sea levels are higher, which is going to bring more water in. In fact, the predictions say that by 2025, which is next year, the sea levels will have raised one to two feet. By 2030, it will be four to five feet. And by 2050, it will be eight to 11 feet. Are we going to have a flooding zone here? Are we going to have people who are endangered on a regular basis every time a storm comes? So I would say, go along with what these two gentlemen are telling you that live there, that see the flooding. It's only going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brian Bumstead. I'm familiar with this area that they're talking about developing. I've got two concerns. One of them being the same as the two previous gentlemen have said regarding the water, the flooding. I don't know how quite to put this, but you know, a lot of, a lot of engineering goes into planning a development of a spot. And what comes to mind is the intersection of State Road 44 and US 19 at the Wawa store. They did a lot of engineering on that one. But back on September 26, they had four feet of water in a store. So I think something has to get tweaked in that whole planning and approval process. The other thing that I'm concerned about is the traffic on 19 by where they have that ingress egress. It moves at a pretty good clip. Somebody mentioned the speed on, the speed limit being 30, 55 mile an hour. You get 55 mile an hour, you get run over out there at that, that location. So it would seem that eventually there's going to be a need for a traffic control at that, at that ingress egress point. And that's it. That's all for me, folks. You know, I think we need to plan ahead so that we're not coming back in and doing reverse engineering.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Waters. And I, if they try to develop this area, they're going to have to put in a lot of fill. They put in all this fill, the water's going to drown some of these people. So I'm against the project altogether. Okay?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Seeing no more public comments. Oh.
Hey, Alex Getz, KPM Franklin. I'm a civil engineer that's been helping out with the preliminary analysis for the site. And staff raised several concerns as well as a few members here from the community next door. And I just wanted to, you know, regardless of the outcome of this hearing, kind of just provide you a couple of thoughts on what we're going to be doing as part of the engineering design for this site. Again, I can't speak to the engineers that did the Wawa, but this site is a landlocked basin. It does have two flood stages associated with it. One is being the coastal, coastally influenced flood stage as well as the traditional FEMA flood stage. So both of those stages are analyzed. And you know, this part of Homosassa Springs in the county, it is in need of some resilient infrastructure that is built above both of those flood stages. So the way we would design this, upon this initial approval, would be to ensure that the parking lots and stormwater facilities are low enough to not cause adverse impacts on other properties. However, the, the buildings would be high enough to survive a larger storm event that comes through that would be tightly influenced. So again, this is the first conceptual approval with a conceptual site plan that still needs to be fully engineered. Staff did make several concerns noted about the variance requested. We will not be requesting any of those variances as a, as a formal part of this approval. Again, you know, having 11 parking spaces in a row, we have 50 additional parking spaces than we need. It's just, you know, conceptual plan. We're not specifically requesting those variances. 100% of Land Development Code would be met in all of those areas. And then also for the access off US 19, again, this, this would be the preliminary approval on the number of units, but not the formal approval of the transportation impact analysis that would come after. And what we would look at at that stage is whether a signalized intersection is required or deceleration lanes. All of that would be reviewed with the Florida Department of Transportation to ensure that the access to and from the, the facility would be safe and functional. Staff also recommended a couple of things, like a bus stop and increased landscape buffering. Again, we have no objection to either of those. I would be happy to accept those as conditions of approval just to make sure that, you know, everything is good. And again, it's, it's just a complicated site in the sense that there are a lot of wetlands on site that we are avoiding. There was a note that we were too close to a wetland in one of the areas. We have zero intention to, to develop, you know, and not meet code on that. So we would revise our plan to move the building a couple more feet away from the wetland to ensure we meet code. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else for open to the public? Seeing none, open to the public is now closed. Return it to the board. Commissioner Cannard.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start with some comments. If need be, I'll, I'll make the motion to deny the application at this point. It seems incomplete. Stat, I put a lot more weight into the staff report than I do necessarily what the PDC did, did or does. Staff report was not good on this. I don't see how we can sit here and approve something that what we're hearing is, we're going to change this, we're going to change this, we're going to change this and make it all compliant. But so anyway, it's not something I can, I can support right now. I do want to make a couple of notes here that the flooding concern, we're hearing this more and more naturally after the hurricanes, the storms that we've had the last year, year and a half. The stormwater for these projects is all engineered. The engineers need to take that into account to hold that water onsite. So I So I, I'm less concerned about them flooding out the neighbors because the engineers need to take care of it in those, in those ponds. Gopher turtles, the same thing. There needs to be a study, the gopher turtles on the properties, where they're at. They're not going to move ahead with just clear cutting regardless of where there's turtles and so forth at. And the animals on the property. The animals on the property are going to do the same thing that the animals on each one of our properties did when it was cleared for our house. They're going to adapt or they're going to move on. You know, again, a, any, any virgin piece of ground is going to have animals on it. Our homes, our, the, the properties that our homes sit on, that was virgin ground at some time. They had deer, they had squirrels, they had birds. And they either adapt or they move on. So again, I'm not as concerned about that part of it. That's part of a growing community. But the staff report needs to be far more favorable to the project before I'd be on board with it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
I agree with Commissioner Kennard. I think it's a lovely project. I'm not sure it's ever going to be right where it is. It's the kind of project we need in the county. But the, the staff has to be on board with it. You've got some pretty serious issues. And I don't know if it's ever going to be, you know, consistent with our comp plan and LDC in full, just because it's so doggone close to, you know, it's coastal high hazard. So that's just going to be difficult. But I applaud you for the project in total. I think it's, it looks like it'll be lovely. I just wish you'd find a different spot for it.
Madam Chair, can I make one more comment?
You sure can.
Okay. The evacuation time, I am not concerned about that either. Given that the current evacuation time calculation does not contemplate the Suncoast Parkway. That's a pretty major omission. With that road coming through the county, that changes the evacuation times. And that study has not been repeated since the parkway came to 44 and definitely not since it's going to 486 and ultimately to 19. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about it increasing the evacuation time by a couple, a few minutes because I think in reality, that doesn't happen with Suncoast Parkway here.
Any other board comment?
Yeah.
Commissioner Barrett.
Coastal high hazard has restrictions and you just want to go around them. That's not good, okay? The next thing is, you're either going to have 24, eight, we're going to have 24 unit building or 36 unit building. So that's eight to a floor or 12 to a floor. That's okay. Because we do, you know, they are going to be apartments. And I looked at the evacuation times. Now, they may not have mattered to Mr., you know, Commissioner Kennard. But it's either going to be 15 and a half hours for evacuation, because I change it from minutes to hours, or 19 hours. That's, that's a significant amount of time. If you take the minutes and see how many hours it is. It may seem short to you, but start, start, you know, I, I, it's double talk. And that's where I'm, I'm seeing, you're trying to put something where it doesn't belong because it's, it's, it's a flood zone. And it is a flood plain. And I can understand the people that contacted me telling me that they did not want it there because they also get floods. They get water all year. So to be moving 156 minimum people to there is not what, what the county would really like to see at this point. They are nice units. I'm not saying they're not. And I agree with Commissioner Davis. On another piece of property, it would be a wonderful, wonderful thing to, to put in because we do need affordable housing. So I'm, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Kennard, and I'm not going to approve it.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Thank you. I'm not going to reiterate everything that everyone said, but the staff report wasn't favorable. But if it does come back for some reason, we changed our, our code so that large developments would not go in places like this and have so many new vehicles going into residential neighborhoods. I can think of another neighborhood in my district that was really fighting and having a problem with this. So it looks like the majority of the housing would be on the side towards South Nob Hill Terrace. And if you're talking 156 places, that potentially could be 300 or so cars. We just can't have all of those vehicles going on this kind of undeveloped street. It's not made for high traffic. US 19 would be the correct way to come out, but you would need more than one entrance. And it doesn't look like you have the property. So I don't, I don't know what this looks like in the future. But if it, if it happens, or some other project comes before us in the future, I know for me, I look for that. You, you can't put something there to benefit whatever, the developer and then affect all those current residents with that heavy, heavy traffic load. And that's why we have put that in place as a community. Thank you.
Well, I've just spent the entire last week and this Monday talking about flood risk and the lessons learned from this season of hurricanes and flooding. And the one thing that scares me, you know, you talk about building this property up so it doesn't flood. But if, if there's a flood across the parking lot, you can't get to those buildings. And this being more of a project for affordable housing. If they can't get into where they live, that's a problem. And if they're displaced for any amount of time, I mean, I, I can tell you that I just listened to Pasco and Hernando on the other side of 75, and they're still pumping water today, trying to get it out of these areas. So that's very concerning to me, the amount of flooding that we saw through this hurricane season. And I, I'm just, would like to caution everybody. I think there, there are a lot of lessons to be learned from this season. You know, they said it was a one in 500-year flood. They seem to be coming faster and faster and, and being more significant. So I can't support this either.
Who's going to make a motion?
I can do it, Madam Chair.
All right.
Based on competent and substantial evidence, I make a motion that we deny PUD 2646, Todd Pressman for, and I can't even begin to, Chala Virega? Was I even close?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard, to deny this application. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five votes. Next on our agenda is CPA-AA-PUD-2024-00022, Jim Green for Core Business Center.
Commissioners, at the conclusion of this hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, admitting the Citrus County future land use map by redesignating approximately 1.6 acres from the Transportation Community Utilities District to the General Commercial District, providing for applicability, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. As well as an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, admitting Citrus County land use atlas map by redesignating approximately 1.6 acres from the Transportation Community, excuse me, Transportation Communication Utilities District to the General Commercial District with a planned unit development for some light industrial and governmental uses, providing for applicability, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing and providing for an effective date. And I believe the applicant is here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Evening, Commissioners. As you will notice, I'm not Jim Brain. Just for the record, I'm Don Taylor, representing the Citrus Business Center, doing businesses core. It's a 501(c)(3). And more specifically, our future citrus makerspace that we're going to use this building for. And you previously approved a lease for us to use that building. And so we are following up now to get the zoning change from what it was before for government use to commercial. And we will be leasing about two-thirds of the building. It will be, continue to be shared with the sandbag operation for the county. And as we mentioned before, if the sandbag operation goes in place, we will not be using that building. It will be totally turned over to the county, and we will not use it again until the sandbag operation is completed. So that's where we are right now. This is, well, I guess I did mention that we, we'd be leasing about two-thirds of the building for the commercial use. And we hope to have it open for business around February 1st, is what, what the planning is. And I think we've mentioned to you before what the makerspace is and, and what it will be used for.
Board members, any questions of Mr. Taylor? Thank you.
Okay.
Joe, you're up.
Good evening. All right, so this application is to change the subject property, which is a county property, from the telecommunications, Transportation Utilities District to General Commercial to allow for the makerspace use that Mr. Taylor has described there. And so here you can see what the subject building looks like. As he stated, they are intending to use about two-thirds of the subject building that you see in the front here, with about a third left over for the county's use. And so here you can see, this is the TC use that exists right now. And this is the general commercial that they're proposing. So it is in line with some of the other lots in that general area. And so here you can see the site plan of the existing site. I blew it up for you there. So in the red is the approximate lease area. And the blue is the county's portion that we're going to be maintaining. And so this application would allow for them to utilize this as a makerspace while also still maintaining the county's interest in this property for sandbag site. And the Planning and Development Commission did recommend approval of this on their November 7th PDC hearing.
Thank you.
And also, the ordinance that's in front of you, the draft ordinance, has nine conditions. If you look in the staff report, there's actually 13. I obviously lost my mind one day when I drafted the ordinance. So there are 13 proposed conditions. It's in, on page 2259 of your packet.
Thank you. And Mr. Taylor, you're fine with the conditions?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion public? Oh. You can give us a minute. Open now up to the public for any public comment?
Bob Rudemiller, Floro City. I heard the word makerspace. Are you familiar with makers and what they do? It's phenomenal. It is, I, I really almost fell over my chair hearing that we're going to be having, having makers or expanding makers in Citrus County. It brings a lot of retired folks and very high, highly skilled professionals here, making things from scratch, developing things, R&amp;D. This is phenomenal that we're bringing this into this, into this county. So I fully support it. But also, the reason I'm telling you this is because I thought that it'd be very interesting for each of you to look more into detail of what the makers are all about. It's phenomenal. I first saw it in Hawaii about 15 years ago. And I always tried to visit them every time. So I encourage you to, to vote and pass this.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, we'll close open to the public.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Based on competent and substantial evidence, I make a motion that we approve CPA-AA-PUD-2024-00022 for Core Business Center.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Finnegan.
And if I just may respond to Mr. Rudemiller. I, I've toured several, but one that was super phenomenal. I was out at National Association of Counties last year. Phenomenal one in Austin. It happened to be there in Austin. It was, I'm excited about it.
All right, any further board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. All right.
We're back to me. Are we on F? Yeah, right, we're on F. Sorry, F and G two. Good catch.
So item F, outstanding commission items.
You're still here.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you doing tonight?
Very good.
We have just a few updates from our list of projects. And so I will go through them quickly. We do have our landfill expansion, Phase 4A. The construction's ongoing. We do have a target completion date of this month, so we're hoping to hit that. We have the access road paved, electrical poles installed, lift station and stormwater pads poured, and moving full speed ahead on that project. Core civic staffing, we discussed earlier. As of November 30th, we were at 62.11%. For fiscal year '24, '25, road resurfacing and preservation, we did receive an approval on that item earlier today. Thank you for moving that along. The next step for that would be to begin the construction phase for this fiscal year's road resurfacing. Pavement management system related to that. We are pending the approval of a purchase order before we can go out and start the scanning of our roads to get that assessment completed. And finally, with the scop resurfacing of Duncan Field, the onsite pavement preparation is underway and construction is in progress.
Wonderful.
Any questions?
When do we expect the purchase order?
That I will follow up on. I know that we are right in the middle of it right now. And it looks like my target date for the next step was to begin at the 1st of January. So I would anticipate that to be this month.
Thank you. Board members, anything for Veronica? All right. Onto I?
G two.
G two, did I miss something? Okay, G two. I got lost.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Eric Kidd, Director of Community Services.
Nice tie.
Oh, thanks. It's Christmas. These slides I'm going to run, there's no technical or data slides. These are just going to be photos, a photo slide deck as I just give you an update for the Ford Island Gulf Beach restoration. First, I want to just say, you know, we're greatly appreciative of the patience and understanding as we continue to push forward to restore the park. But for sake of brevity, I'll, I'll just stick to what happened, you know, what, what we've done so far and the next steps that we're going to focus on. As you watch through the slides, you'll see that the damage caused by Helene, it's like nothing else this, this small island area has ever experienced in the past. It was a pretty devastating loss for the park. Unfortunately, every structure in this park was destroyed, including the bathrooms, which some of you may have already seen online, the 10 pavilions, the fishing pier and the boardwalk, as well as the dock and the floating platform. All of it was, was completely lost. The sand, all the sand from the beach was completely removed. A lot of it wound up in the parking area. Greater degree of it wound up in the marsh and in the water. All of the concrete barriers, parking stops, all, everything knocked off its foundations. Even the traffic and directional signs were bent, removed, twisted. So since the storm, we have had the area closed off mainly because of safety. And the staff's been working pretty diligently just to get the debris cleaned up and to make it safe. So what's been done so far, it's been a major cleanup effort. Most of the work done so far has been to clean up the large amount of debris. And we're talking from the pavilions, the metal roof, lots of boards, lots of concrete rubble, all spread around the entire area. All the concrete barriers, you know, we've been cleaning that up. We moved all the concrete barriers back to place that deformed and reestablished the retaining wall. We've been raking the beach area, removing all sorts of debris that has been, you know, even partially or totally buried in places. We've tried to reclaim as much of the beach sand as we can, but it will have to be tested before we can put that back onto the beach. There's a lot of rules and regulations around what kind of sand we can use and what we can't do. So moving forward, our priority is simply to get everything safe and get the access road open. So moving forward, our priority is simply to get everything safe and get the access road open. I know a lot of folks have been asking about that. We're hoping to have that access road open, our target dates sometime around mid to late January. The next steps is going to be the full demolition of what remains of the old bathroom structure. Once that happens, and that will happen over the next few weeks. Working with the contractor, we've been told that that could possibly be finished by the end of the year, 1st of January. That will make that whole area much safer, so we can begin opening up the parking area and of course make at least the beach walk accessible. Simultaneously, we're working to get the dock and the floating platform for the boat launch, get all of that replaced and get the boat ramp functional. That's the one thing we hear the most about, folks want access to the boat ramp. You know, that's getting a lot of attention right now. That's the only direct access right onto the Gulf ramp that we have. So it's kind of unique in that way. Some good news, we did just this last week, the floating ramp. We were thinking about where it went, what happened to it. That's part of that structure for the launch. We got some patrons, Harry and Lois Booth, I'll just give them a thank you. You'll find for the, in the slides, there's a picture of Harry sitting on it. It was found miles away over in the, on Seven Mile Loop, if some of you are familiar with the Crystal River Preserve. They were doing that Seven Mile Loop Trail and he emailed me a picture on Friday that we think this might be your floating dock. And we had just had that replaced, if you recall, last year when Adalia hit. So that was kind of a nice find and it was still in very, very good condition. So we will be recovering that and hopefully save a little on the restoration of that dock. We are still taking necessary steps with FEMA and of course the other agencies to get the, in the process of getting the beach restored, you know, that, getting that area open will take a little bit more time. But as I mentioned earlier, getting the parking lot and the surrounding space open as soon as we can. The pier and the boardwalk, as you can see from some of those other photos, that's going to take a little more time. It'll be probably the most time consuming part of the restoration. You know, last year Hurricane Adalia did considerable damage to the pier and the boardwalk. We were working with FEMA all year. We were finally prepared to start the repairs to get that going and then that's when Helene came and she finished the job. So now it will require a full rebuild. We're expecting next week, hopefully a walkthrough with FEMA onsite and we can get some additional information. So we're definitely going to be doing regular updates. We'll be coming out, we'll put them on the county website and social media to keep everyone updated on the progress. Even once we get the main area open. So we encourage everybody to, you know, follow those, follow the social media and give us a call if they have any additional questions. Yes?
Eric, well, the bathrooms on the rebuild, will they be elevated because of the floodplain?
Yeah, they will have to meet current code. So we worked with the insurance company, I know before Mary Glancey retired, that was on, I told her, oh, you're not allowed to retire until we get that done? No, just kidding, but no, she got that working. It is Blue Sky is the contractor for the insurance company that's doing the demolition and will also be rebuilding that.
Board members, do you have any questions for Eric?
I think he just answered it. I was going to ask how we were paying for it and obviously it is covered by our insurance company.
On the, on the structure. And then of course the walkthrough with FEMA next week will tell us a lot more.
What about the docks and, you said the structure, I'm thinking that's bathrooms and the structured area. What about the docks and the boat ramp?
The docks, the boat ramp area, that will be billed to the storm. And so we're doing everything according to FEMA's rules, so according, you know, get that done and then hopefully that will all be reimbursed by FEMA.
By FEMA, okay.
But that'll be a process. I know it took a while, it took a while with the pier, we're hoping to move a little faster than last year.
What about the pier?
The pier is the bigger one. There's a few complications they haven't been able to answer yet because the pier was about 50% damaged during Adalia and then it was finished by Helene, so that's two separate storms. So that's one of our big questions for them next week.
Madam Chair. Just in the spirit of our ongoing improvement in county communications, that slideshow is pretty powerful, that shows how powerful those storms were and what the damage was. And I know people are eager to get that reopened. Do we have that slideshow on our social media accounts, on our website? Things like that?
I will get with staff and we'll make sure that happens.
I mean, it's, I'm just one commissioner, it's just a, it's just a communication thought.
There has been several pictures put on the county's web, social media and Facebook page, I believe.
It's all up to, it's all up to Mr. Howard whether he wants that to happen, but that would be.
We've actually done some, I think Commissioner Canard has helped us and assisted us too recently and before. And we have Citrus and Focus videos and I agree that this tells a story. We wanted to get that out when we started seeing social media posts. When you see this, you see the true devastation of the impacts.
Thank you.
Just on that note, I would tell you, traveling through other counties and talking to other commissioners and counties south of us, I want to give applause and hats off to our staff and all the work that you guys did. We are light years ahead of everybody to the south of us. I mean, we did an exceptional job and they're, they're still scrambling to figure out what the next move is, so. Nice work.
Thank you. We were getting questions about Pine Island, I think I said, no, that's, you're going to have to call Hernando County. I don't, I don't think they have, they experienced similar extensive devastation there, so it may take them a while as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now me, I think. Jay?
But yes, you are up.
I am going to be super brief, I just want to say that I have good news, provisionally good news on the medical examiner. Hoo-ha. I spoke to two different Lake County Commissioners and saw one at FAC last week and talked to the other one over the phone. And Sabatini, Commissioner Sabatini absolutely did not have authority to speak for the board. There's been not only no vote, but no consensus of the board to pull out of the medical examiner district. So. That's all I got.
Was it Olsol County, the other one?
Seminole. But Seminole's not an original member of District 5, it's a member of District 24. And they basically didn't like their district, so they pleaded with this district to join us. So losing them just makes it back aligned to where it was before. But losing Lake would be a bridge too far on our plans for the morgue.
Commissioner Canard.
Yes, I'll try and move through this as quickly as possible. This has been on the board's radar for a number of years. We have, we have three appraisals on this property. And contrary to what's been put out there, a previous offer was not rejected by the property owner. The property owner had this, had this property listed with a broker and as we started moving through the process, I believe at the time, we had acquired two different appraisals, there started to be some discussion on it. And for whatever reason, the property was pulled off the market at the time and the property owner went through a full, I guess, a lot reconfiguration and ended up with, with a number of individual residential lots out there. The pitch to purchasing the property, why the county should, I've mentioned some of these things in the past, that if we collect park impact fees, which we are, those park impact fees should be used for expanding our parks. We're going to be increasing the number of residential units in the county. We're going to be increasing the number of commercial buildings in the county. We had, we had another agenda item on our agenda today to approve the Phase 2 environmental assessment of the Crystal River Airport runway. The county, it's no secret the county is growing when we have these opportunities, not just to grab a piece of property, because those, those opportunities will be out there. Pasco County, as crazy as they've grown, they've got opportunities to grab a piece of property and conserve it. But that doesn't necessarily equate to a waterfront piece of property that abuts an existing park that gives the public greater access to the water. That's a growing concern in waterfront communities is that as private individuals buy up these, these pieces of waterfront property, there's less and less access for the public to get there. I've walked this property, if you haven't walked it, you really should. It is, it is truly a gem and this is something that should be in the public hands. Expanding a park is, should be, should be not only on our radar, but it should be something that we should be looking, actively looking to do. This piece of property provides us with that opportunity. My suggestion would, in terms of, in terms of an offer price on it, we've got to start somewhere. My suggestion would be to take the average of the three properties. There's going to be closing costs and such affiliated with that. So I would say the average of those three appraisals minus 10% to help the county cover some of, some of our costs that it will take getting there as well as the cost of the appraisals that the taxpayers have already borne. And in terms of funding sources, I would look first to impact fees, park impact fees. Then I would look to the TDC for funding and I would look to our Duke Special Fund account. Those, between those three sources, depending on, you know, what, what price the county can land at with the, with the property owner, I think that those three sources should provide plenty of funding to get this done.
What was the number you came up with?
Right at 900,000.
My apologies, Madam Chair.
That was just, I didn't throw, I didn't throw a figure out there, that's just back of the napkin math with the three, the three appraisals and then taking off approximately 10% to help cover the expenses that the county would have in getting into this. And my plan for the park, as it's been mentioned many times, is a passive park that you put, you put, you know, suggested earlier, you know, concrete picnic table stuff that yes, water's going to come ashore out there and then it goes back out. I think that we, we have a conversation with the Civic Association out there about helping to maintain this park out, right there in the midst of the community. I know there's been some concern about taking a piece of property off of the tax rolls. When you put a destination type park like that at the end of Ozella Trail, that's going to increase properties on other properties around the area out there. So will it be a complete wash? I don't know that it's that, but what we have done is truly added a gem to our park system. I would, I really hope this board will go down, go down this road. Not just by a majority, but I'd like to see a unanimous vote on this to direct staff to move forward with it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
You know, I've had, I've been in support of this all along and I am still in support of acquiring it, but I have a couple of thoughts and concerns, okay? Number one, with the decimation of our hotel, TDC funds are not going to be very rich for a while because our bed taxes are going to go down. So be careful counting on TDC to be able to help. Secondly, I've been working on this, first got the idea over a year ago. Been working on it with James Toy for a number of months now. I have a plan with a land trust that has an extraordinarily good track record in helping counties get sales tax passed. But one portion of that, one percentage of that sales tax must be used for exactly things like this. So we do have another, and this will come to the, this would be, I plan to propose that this go on, goes to the voters, of course, in November of '26. And we're going to do a workshop probably the end of '25. Because they have this whole, this whole program laid out and they really knock it out of park. Third point is one of the speakers, I'm not necessarily against this today. Third point is one of the speakers today said that, and I think he brings up a good point, that the valuation may be dropping a little bit because of everything that's happened. And I am not comfortable with 900,000 as a first offer. So those are my thoughts, I don't know where I'm going to land today, but just wanted to throw it out there.
Madam Chair, can I respond?
You sure can.
I haven't seen waterfront property dropping in value. By FEMA standards alone, you can bring two feet of fill to a waterfront piece of property without any engineering. With engineering to demonstrate that that fill will stay in place, they can take those lots higher. So make no mistake about it, these lots will sell and people will build homes on them. You know, will they have to bring in more fill than the two feet? Most likely. Or they bring it up, you know, if it's at, if it's at a foot or two feet of elevation now, they may take it to five feet of elevation and then build, you know, obviously they have to, they have to elevate the living space above the floodplain, which out there is probably 14 feet. But if they're up at five feet, now they go up another nine feet and now they're above the floodplain. Well, they have to go, they gotta have free boards, so they go up 10 feet. And they do, it's done every day. There's three of these under construction in my neighborhood right now. Literally the pilings are going in the ground and fills coming in. So FEMA, you know, I appreciate the information that they brought, but it's incorrect. Or it's speculative that, you know, people are running from the coast. People that have been on the coast and we've dodged hurricanes for decades, they may be running from the coast. But the people from South Florida and the people from the Northeast, where it's still really cold and it's snowing, they're running down here for the coast. Properties on the waterfront are selling without any issues. I will support, when we get there, I will support the idea of the one cent sales tax dependent upon, you know, where it's going to. I like the idea of a portion of it going to conservation properties. But that, even the vote on that is two years out. Once it gets, you know, if it, if it should pass in November of '26, those ballot initiatives for those at home may not be aware, that has to go on a general election ballot. So the next general election will be in '26. If it passes this board to go on the ballot, then if, and it's a super big if, if it passes in '26, likelihood is it's not implemented until '27. This piece of property, these lots will not be contiguous by then. They'll either be gone or very broken up, which defeats the purpose of, of moving forward with it. I'm fine with coming up with another number to get the conversation started. But I do believe that I have no doubt that the, the owner of the property is watching this meeting to see if the county's serious about it. They have been gracious enough at this point to hold off on bringing these properties to the market. But my guess is that doesn't last long. They don't live here in the state, they went through this whole process with staff, with their legal counsel to get these, this property, these lots reconfigured, to put them up for sale and to sell them for residential homes.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Well, three and a quarter acres at $900,000 sounds okay to me because I watch and I know what waterfront property costs. People buy a lot for that. And I agree with you about people fleeing. People that have been priced out will flee. And there'll be a house left that has to be taken down. And somebody else will scoop that up and build up. We're not going to have vacant waterfront property, we're, it's just going to turn hands. And I do think that a community that doesn't plan for parks with growth is a very poorly planned community. And as we grow, I hope this isn't the only park idea that comes up because parks are so very important. So for those reasons, I will support that. Before I give up the floor, I do want to say, if you haven't been out to the Federal Park down in Homosassa, you know, it's very close to the water also, but there's like very well-built like stairs and then when you get up to this big platform, picnic table and some seating area, so, and it's weathered storm after storm. So there are ways that we, we can look into later for the park, that you could have a very nice area. that you could have a very nice area and when it's elevated, you get this fantastic view. If you go out to that federal park, it's a fantastic view. Um, so yes, if the owner of this property is watching, at least two commissioners so far, very serious because parks are important. And I agree with you, water access is so important. I think there's certain parts of the county where we have water access and, um, it's getting very congested. And as we're growing, it's getting more congested. So to open up these places, maybe for kayaks and all of these fun recreational, um, amenities, that's not only good for the people that live here, but also for the correct kind of tourism that I'm sure Ovis is trying to bring here. Um, there's been problems in both Homosassa and Crystal River with, um, tourists kinda using, using up what we have, destroying and leaving. And you know what you're talking about, Commissioner. I do think that it's gonna get a, a very nice crowd that's into nature and kayak, paddle boarding, those sorts of things, or just enjoying a nice day at a park and, um, and then they'll be staying at our hotels and eating at our restaurants and spending at our stores. So thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Very good, thank you.
Commissioner Barrett. Glad you have something on your mind.
Oh, I got a lot on my mind. Number one, my people that I go out there and I talk to, they do not want Pirate's Cove as a park. However, they have suggestions. If you go down North Citrus Springs Boulevard to the end to 39, there is a 10-acre piece of property that's nice and flat. It also has a bird sanctuary, it has trails. It has a trail that goes down to a 10-acre lake that empties into the Whittaker Coochie River, which can be made into a very nice kayak la- place. There is a building there that has bat- bathrooms in it. There are picnic tables there. There's a horseshoe park, okay? And it's all level land and I'm sure we can get it for less than a million dollars. And if I'm using impact fees to buy this, the largest population impact is in District 3. This would be a park in District 3 which has water, which already has bathrooms. It has the horseshoe people, it has, oh, it has a kitchen. So it has everything that's already needed for a park except somebody to buy it and maybe upgrade a little bit of it. You talk about water, it's got it. It can be used 12 months a year. It doesn't flood, okay? Um, but the people, you know, that I've been talking to, they said, remember, we're a bird sanctuary in Citrus Springs. So you've got people that are coming. We're right there by the Whittaker Coochie Trail where you walk and ride your bike. It's like about three quarters of a mile from the, the bike trail that Commissioner Donato put in, okay? So the thing is, it's centrally located, okay? Um, like I said, if we're gonna expand parks and use impact fees, I thought we were supposed to use impact fees for the people that live here. The fees came because the people came, they made an impact. Now, I don't care what you tell me, out in Ozillo, there is not a lot of people coming. Yeah, they've got nice property, they've got nice houses and you've got the water. But I mean, it's underwater. I'm wanting to see our impact fees spent where the people live on the people that actually paid the impact fees for a piece of property. Kayaking is wonderful. People like to do it out, over at Hunter Springs, they take their kayaks. This would be one that you could take and you could go into the river. And we have a lot of people that do kayak. So I will not vote for Pirate's Cove at all. And that's due to the fact that I have asked the people that live in my district. They don't want anything to do with a Pirate's Cove thing. There's only one road in and one road out. It floods. So for, for the people in, in the rest, I, I didn't have, I didn't ask the people in Inverness, you know, how they felt about it because they have lakes and things over here. Um, I didn't ask the people in Floral City, but those aren't my personal districts. I do go out and ask my people. And I ask, you know, what do you think about this? And they said, well, it's supposed to be, you know, we need a park. We need parks in, and I agree, we need parks.
Thank you. Um, a couple of thoughts here and might need Eric to walk us down this. We're in the middle of a impact fee study. Uh, that should be back with the first quarter. So our impact fees could show some significant acceleration from where we've been. Is this okay, Mr. Howard?
Yeah, the, the, the study is due to be completed in March.
I like where you're going with this, Commissioner Kennard and, and Commissioner Barrett. Um, as commissioners, you're, you do represent your district, but you're voted on at large. And so, uh, we're really here to kinda balance out the needs across the county, so, um, a- and I appreciate what you're saying, but we kinda have to look at it in, in a bigger picture. And I think we're gonna have, you know, we really haven't put a lot of focus on, um, parks in general. Um, I mean, there's a lot that could be done at our parks. You know, Holden Park, I, I would love, I mean, we've been working on this for years since I chaired Tourism, you know, expanding parks so that we could have regulated ball fields. And Commissioner Kennard, you were there back in the day and talked about that. Um, I, I guess where I'm taking this to is I like this idea. We know that we need a new animal shelter, um, for multiple reasons. One, it's, it's tired and wore out, we need more space and it's in the wrong location. And we need to get our one leg of our economic development going there at the, the Inverness Airport. So I know that's due to come back to us in January. We have our impact fee study going on. There'll be multiple components of that. What I guess I would like to see us do, we've got to stop thinking so myopically. We've got to start taking a bigger picture, look at our county and our needs. I asked about this, I would like to, for us to talk about bonding, going out, assessing our needs and bonding this stuff. And let's get it done. I mean, we've got to stop talking about it and start moving it forward. If we've got a payment of a couple hundred thousand dollars a year and the, and our citizens are seeing something for it, they're gonna love it. But we can't, you know, we can't just keep, you know, putting a dollar in the piggy bank every year and hope we're gonna end up with the end result because the community's gonna outgrow before the piggy bank gets full. So, um, whether I'd like to cobble up a few projects, look at it. I know we've talked about, um, you know, a special needs shelter. You know, we're talking about the animal shelter, we're talking about this. And, and we can, you know, look at parts of this on impact fees as part of the bond repayment. So I think whatever we're looking at, I, we, let's figure out a methodology to help us cross the goal line and get where we need to go and move all of it forward and not get so caught up in the weeds. Because we're gonna spend it.
Um, I would, I would agree with you, I believe on everything that you said. Um, Commissioner Barrett, you have to start thinking full county, not just your district. Uh, it's the reason that we changed the park impact fees from district only to countywide. Um, we need to be providing parks for the entire county. We need to be looking at, uh, bigger picture stuff. You know, the, right now, I'm requesting we use some of that for, uh, this particular project. I would also suggest at some point down the road that we use some of those impact fees as well as some of our boat launch fee money uh, to expand parking down by McCray's Boat Ramp. You know, there's a project to be done down there. But you can't, you can't do it if you're focused just on, I represent District 1. Um, the, uh, the Central Ridge area definitely needs more, um, uh, more field space for football, for soccer, stuff like that. At some point, you know, that's been talked about since Commissioner Carneyhan was sitting here, that we need to put a football field out there. I said, great, propose it. I'm on board because I, I, I've been there years ago and I know it's needed, but it's never been brought forward to the board. Uh, Commissioner Baze, right now, I would, I, I'm just asking for some of the money that we have in, um, impact fees right now. Once, once we finish our impact fee study and we come back with a proposal for bonding that, that, um, uh, those park impact fees or bonding, you know, another impact fee that we have to, um, you know, to build larger structures, to make larger projects, uh, I would be in favor of that. This one, I think is very time sensitive. Um, I don't think that it's something that you rush into any real estate deal, but I do think that the, as I said before, that the owner of these properties, uh, has been gracious to hold it off of the market for right now. That's not gonna last long. Um, you know, and doesn't mean that they sell right away. They could sit there for a month. They, they could sit there for two years. Um, but waiting until we're ready to do some of these other bigger projects, um, again, I don't think this entire piece of property is contiguous then. And that's what really makes this, um, I think, a, a, a commodity that the county really needs to take the, take the leap now and see what we can do to acquire it. I'm open to suggesting a, you know, a different starting price. I, I hate even having these public discussions to go, this is where we're starting at. This is a piece of property that we want. Uh, but Commissioner Davis, if you've got a different idea for, for a number, I'd be, I'd be open to that as well. But I do wanna get staff, we've talked about this for years. I'd like to get staff moving forward on it.
Can I rebut on this a minute?
Aye. Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Finnegan.
Thank you. Um, I think it's been addressed and I don't wanna beat the dead horse, but just a friendly, and this comes from a good place to Commissioner Barrett because you are new. Um, Commissioner Kennard has proposed an idea for a park that he's put a lot of time and effort and research in. And it's not appropriate to, to pitch another idea on the fly without any research. Like, don't, don't choose that this is better. And if you're always like, I, I don't wanna choose something in another district because it's not my district, there's people probably sitting in this audience that live in your district that would use that park. Lots of people that live in your district would use that park. When I lived in Inverness, I, I went to Crystal River, Homosassa, different places to boat and recreate. Um, that, that's a county asset, not a Commissioner Kennard district asset. So one day, and maybe sooner than later, you may bring up your park idea and you're going to want four other people to do really good things for your district. And the people in your district are going to want us all to listen with an open mind. So there's been a lot of my district, my district, but I encourage you just to talk to everybody in the, in the county, in the community. Um, that's where we would all get in trouble if we're just talking to a small pocket of people. Um, just suggesting to keep, to keep it open. Um, the reason that this is special is because it's, it abuts a current park. This is expanding a very lovely park already. This is, uh, kind of a once in a lifetime opportunity. I don't think that we have too many nice parks that we can just start buying up land and expanding. I'm sure if we could throw a bunch of land on Whispering Pines, which is a wonderful, well-used park, we'd be out there grabbing up some more property. But, um, it's just a nice opportunity.
Just before I go to Commissioner Davis, um, you know, a very dear friend of mine that passed away about a year ago, thought this was so special that she actually donated, um, in her last will and testament, a piece of property to this. And, and it really is a very special place out there, so Commissioner Davis?
I can attest to the fact that it's magical. I mean, gone kayaking out there myself and I'm in District 5. So, um, Commissioner Finnegan's advice, I think, would, um, was spot on.
Commissioner Barrett.
Okay, first of all, it's not just a park in my district. What it is, is the land is in my district. And it's just within my district because it's almost in Commissioner Davis's district because it's on 39. The reason I'm proposing it is because it would take less funds to get it operational and it wouldn't flood, okay? I cannot in good conscience spend money, whether it's impact fee money or tax money, on something that I know has the potential to flood. We just watched how many minutes of Fort Island Trail Beach? And how many dollars have got to be spent to get that Fort Island beach back? And you're proposing a similar place to be bought and built? And to me, that is not prudent with our, it's not being prudent with, uh, being good stewards of our citizens' money, whether it's impact fees or whether it's money from the, what do you call it? TDC, anything, any of the funds that come in. What I'm proposing is we get another thing, find another option and yeah, get more parks. I agree, we need more parks. But I don't think, and I think the gentleman that said wait two years was on the right trail. I think he really was. And I think Commissioner Davis knows that also, that the price is gonna go down because of the fun, of, of the flooding. Why do you think we just turned down this other, um, pe- people that came to want it to build houses? It's because the area they're looking at is high hazard, you know, coastal, it, it floods. What do you think Pirate's Cove does? It floods. And I don't know, you know, you may think that I'm crazy about whatever, but I couldn't care less if it's in my district or your district. What I care about is, am I spending the money or am I wasting it?
All right. Why are we repairing the beach? Because people go there. Residents go there, tourists go there. Why are we repairing the ramp? Because residents go there, visitors go there. Why are we going to rebuild the fishing pier? Residents go there, visitors go there. All of them spend money. Yes, it costs money to rebuild those areas that are on the waterfront, but it's going to produce far more money for our local economy than what it's gonna cost us to rebuild those places. We have 27,000 acres of Highland Park right in the middle of the county. The problem is, we don't have a whole lot of folks using it. We have an enormous number of people that use the coastline and the lakes on the east side of the county. That doesn't mean that at some point we don't need to add another, uh, more acreage in Highland Parks. But right now, we've got an opportunity to buy a piece of waterfront property that we need to jump on to expand the park out there. Whatever we spend on that park will come back to us in multiples. Will come back to the local economy in multiples. We heard, and you've repeated, that the, the price of waterfront property is going to come down. There's a double lot in Crystal River that just hit the market for 2.5 million. That's going the other direction. I can tell you waterfront property is still going the other direction. Maybe there's, maybe there's properties inland that, uh, because the, uh, the, uh, uh, the inventory is increasing, so that's decreasing some of the pressure on the price. Prices are still going up, maybe just not as much. Uh, waterfront property, it's not happening.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
Um, number one, have you been there, Commissioner Barrett?
Mm-hmm.
So have you done your research? Second is, glad to hear that. Um, second is not only everything that Commissioner Kennard said, but also we're not, there's no proposal to put bathrooms out there, I don't believe. There's porta potties which can be yanked before a hurricane, correct? And picnic table, there's, it's incredibly shallow out there, so we're not doing a boat ramp launch. It's a very simple passive park with very little to maintain or repair after a hurricane. So just wanted to add those points.
All right, let's take.
One, one other question. Do you have any ideas on the price? I'm willing to hear your opinion, Mr. Baze.
Um, I'm fine, it's starting at the 900,000. I think that's, I think that's a very fair, um, offer. And, um, so Commissioner Kennard, I think we've beat this dead horse and I'm gonna ask you to make your motion.
I would make a motion, uh, that this board, um, authorize and direct staff, um, to begin negotiations for the purchase of the entire parcel at Pirate's, the affectionately known as Pirate's Cove property in Ozillo. Um, I would suggest an offer price of 900,000 and the funding sources. Um, I would suggest an offer price of nine-hundred thousand, and the funding sources, uh, would be several different pots of money, the, the, uh, impact fees, TDC money, uh, and Duke's special funds, um, account. And then, uh, let's see, D, approve and authorize staff to select one of the county's real estate brokers to negotiate, and approve and authorize staff to obtain all necessary documents. Uh, let's see, to effectuate the, uh, acquisition of the property, and if contract is approved, authorize staff to order a title search and execute all other documents. Uh, and G, approve and authorize the chairman or designate to execute all related and closing documents.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Um, is there any public comment?
Stephen Schwartz, Pine Ridge, Beverly Hills. I tend to agree with Janet. Okay? I, uh, came before this board, right after the Ozello vote, and I gave you a warning about Adalia and other pending storms, and they came to pass. I'm going to tell you this now. This year was no fluke. Storms will be getting worse. Tides will become higher. As I explained earlier, the sea levels are rising, pushing more of that water inland. The more you build on areas that get flooded, the more problems you're going to have. What I'd like to see is a county square in Central Ridge where people can come, similar to what they are out at the villages, where there's a band shell, and people can play under the band shell, they can go through the park, they can dance on the concrete, and it's in the center of the county. Anytime you're going to be putting anything up along that water, it's high risk, which is why I agree with Janet. You denied somebody from putting up a complex that I happen to agree with. When I say agree with that, I agree we do need, um, housing, apartments for people. But again, it was in a bad space. Come back, you told him, and, uh, put it in somewhere else. Pirates Cove, you know, yeah, we have a lot of places to go out on the water already. So, spending county money when we can't fix our roads is something that I think you need to seriously look at about where our taxpayer dollars are going and how you are representing all the residents in this county toward the fact of building something that's going to be around after they're no longer here.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'm going to close open to the public. Call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes four-one.
Thank you, Board.
You're welcome. Commissioner Barrett, do you have anything?
Currently, I haven't been to any meetings except with the people out there that are sitting in the audience, because I don't know when and what committees I'm on. But once I get told, I'll be able to come back and explain stuff to you.
Very good. Commissioner Finnegan?
No, ma'am.
Oh, that leaves me. Um, so, as we had the, um, COPC information today, and we all know now that it lacks some very specific direction in it, um, I've asked our legal counsel Denise Lynn to work with our, um, the chief, the fire chief, to come up with some language to bring back to the board. So I hope that you would support a motion, um, to ask her to prepare that and bring back for us to vote on.
I'll be surprised if you don't have a unanimous vote on this one. We're waiting for your motion.
I make a motion that we direct, uh, Denise Lynn, our county attorney, to work with Chief Stevens to bring back some, um, language that we can live with on a COPC.
Second.
So, motion by Bayes, second by Davis. Is there any public comment? All those in favor signify.
Oh, Board, Board discussion.
Oh, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I, of course, I'm going to fully support you on this, but if we have ideas, I think now's the time, maybe we could throw some things out, if I may. Um, I brought up earlier, we, we do have a fiscal component in there. I think that we should outline what that means. How, how do you check to see if a company is financially stable? How do you check if they can operate twenty-four-seven? Um, what constitutes a need in Citrus County? We need to define what a need looks like. Um, how do we go about getting correct information from the other end? I heard the word nonsense a lot. I would tend to agree with some of it was. How do we not allow that or even look at that? Everything needs to be very fact-based, and it would be nice that it is so clean-cut and fact-based that we can say, this point, here's the fact-based information, this point, here's the fact-based information. Because honestly, no disrespect to Chief, I think he's taken a stab in the dark when we're asking him to make a recommendation. Um, and, uh, we can't do that to him, to us, or the citizens of Citrus County. And I don't know if anyone else has ideas.
Just looking at some of them around the, the state, some of them limit the number of times that they can actually bring them before you. So, I, I think there's a lot of different things that we can do, and I think, um, you know, I think it was mentioned earlier today, we probably need a little better reporting even on our EMS, and some reporting on what's going on with our license holders with the COPC's. Denise, did you have something?
What, what I was going to say is, um, I've been looking around at other, uh, communities in the state, and I thought what I would do is, uh, work with the chief, gather, gather some of them up, look at some of the, the ideas that, that, like, he and I think are good, and then maybe meet with you guys individually and talk about the different things and, and, you know, try, because there's so many different ways to do things, uh, when, when, when it comes to these. So, I think there's some good ideas out there that we can not reinvent, reinvent the wheel, but maybe put some of them together.
Absolutely. Mr. Howard, did you have something? You sure?
General? Not, not on that subject.
All right.
We've got a lot to talk about.
Any other board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, board liaison appointments, I, it's in your board packet, um...
It is? It's not in the...
Into...
Oh, sorry, on this. I'm going online, so...
Stab in the dark here to try to, um, rearrange committee appointments. So, these are my suggestions. If anybody has any input, wants something different, let me know, we can discuss it. Otherwise, these were my recommendations.
I'm good with those.
Board member, is there a consensus? Can we get a motion to adopt, or do you have something, discussion?
Mine seems a little light. I do serve on FAC board and two committees for FAC and two for NACO, but those are of my own workaholic nature. Um, I would be interested, I, I already had said before many times I was on the veteran board and gave it up because Ruthie really wanted it. Um, I would love to be on the veteran board or, um, the MPO alternate, or on the MPO, either one.
I guess I have those, and I, um, those are two that I would really want to keep. I do know that you are at the, um, a lot of the FAC things, so would you want to switch? Would you want me, um, to be the alternate for Small County Coalition? And would you want to be the, the main person for that?
I literally don't even know when and where that meets. Is it always at FAC?
Yes.
Yeah.
How about the Water Supply Authority? You want to run that one? I've been...
I've foisted that off on Commissioner Bayes. I figured she'd be a tiger who could help you fight that fight.
Oh, boy.
I mean, I'm happy to go back to that, but that doesn't necessarily help anything, I don't think.
I just, I mean, I looked at yours, and I felt like, you know, the Tourist Development Council, I think, takes a lot, I mean, that's a, that's a big, a big committee. I mean, it takes a lot of time and a lot of input.
It, that's fine, I mean, I'm...
And I just, I, I thought that, and then, you know, you've got your hands full with the medical examiner, so.
I finally, I finally whipped 4CF into shape. We've got clean audits now. It only took me three years to get there, but...
You've got to take that along now.
Mm-hmm. So, it's, it's fine.
All right. So, I'm going to make a motion to accept the board liaison.
Second.
So, a motion by Bayes, uh, seconded by Kennard. Uh, is there any public input? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five-zero.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I wanted to give just, just a brief update that, um, I was busy celebrating the Pirates Cove vote, and I neglected to give you a pretty important update from the MPO.
Oh.
Um, there was a mixed bag of updates in DOT's, uh, five-year plan, five-year work plan. Unfortunately, they have, they have delayed, uh, let's see, Highway forty-one from the Withlacoochee Bridge to North Sportsman's Point, uh, construction there has been deferred to twenty-seven. And then, let's see, Sportsman's Point to North Arlington, that's been deferred to, construction's been deferred to twenty-nine. And they added, however, um, uh, US forty-one East Louisiana to south of four-eighty-six. I believe that's a, that's a new phase, I think that it is. They added the P and E to fiscal year, uh, thirty, and they added, um, right-of-way acquisition for a state road two-hundred bi- bridge replacement to fiscal year twenty-nine. So those were some, uh, those were some updates on that. Uh, Suncoast Parkway extension, the, uh, contract for, uh, or actually, I believe, I believe they expect the construction to start for, uh, the next segment, four-eighty-six to four-ninety-five in, um, March of twenty-five. And then the next phase of it, um, I believe the contract will be let in the third quarter of twenty-five to go from four-ninety-five to US nineteen. No, construction wouldn't start because they don't have, they don't have the contractor yet. So it's, the contract will be let in, uh, March of twenty-five for four-eighty-six to four-ninety-five, in the third quarter of twenty-five for four-ninety-five to Highway nineteen. I did express to the Turnpike Authority, uh, the concerns of, uh, growing concerns of folks in that area around Emerald Oaks, that opening the first phase of that is going to dump all of that traffic right onto Citrus Avenue. Uh, folks going north naturally go up to Donnellan Road, and then Donnellan Road to nineteen to continue their, their north route, or it will bring people right, more people down Citrus Avenue, um, right into the Crystal River. Right now, their, their schedule, their construction schedule has these two segments, um, opening roughly six months apart, so it wouldn't be a terribly long time, but they agreed to go back and revisit the calendar to see if there's a way they can tighten up those schedules and get them opening, uh, closer to each other. Uh, so hopefully that will be able to happen. I, you know, told them naturally, we don't want to slow down the construction, but opening those two segments together would really help those folks right there along Citrus Avenue and Donnellan Road. Uh, we had, uh, an update on the, uh, airports, Inverness Airport, uh, construction for the taxiway to the Tea Hangers, uh, was added to, uh, twenty-seven, and, um, DOT is just acting as a, uh, pass-through for this grant application to acquire, uh, parcels at the north end of runway eighteen. They've added that to twenty-seven as well.
Thank you. Um, just to follow up on, a little bit on that, uh, and I spent last week at, um, a transportation and, uh, insurance conference, and as you can imagine, both of them are pretty significant in our state. Uh, we're expected to have another three million drivers on the road by twenty-thirty. So, as much as we discuss what's happening here in our county, we have to look at what's going on in our state, and, you know, there's, people are still coming. I mean, we're starting to see a downturn of, um, the net migration of people that are coming to our state, but they're still coming. So, um, there's a lot of work to be done, and, you know, the crisis that we're facing right now are, is insurance. And so I would like, um, I would like to get a workshop on the schedule where we can talk about multiple things and, um, you know, talk about some of our building codes and the resiliency, and, uh, I spent some time in Tampa with the Tampa Bay Regional Partnership, and we had, uh, Congresswoman Jane Castor there and several other people, and we talked about, you know, this hurricane season and, uh, the impacts that it's had on the Tampa Bay region, which are pretty significant, and it has impacts on multiple things when we talk about our insurance market, when we talk about transportation, um, and what it did to, you know, our grids because we shut down, they were actually policing gas stations, um, just because there was no gas, and, and the grid was completely closed down. So, I do, I, I think it's, those are things that I think we should bring the Tampa Bay Partnership up and have them present on some of that information that they're working on. Um, and I was just named Secretary Treasurer of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. I said partnership, but the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. I get them confused. Um, so they're doing a really lot of good work, uh, down there. In fact, you know, they have a three-million-dollar budget, but they were just awarded, um, almost a two-million-dollar grant by FWC to do some resiliency work, and they received another almost million dollars in some other funding to continue doing some of this resiliency. So, very proud of the team down there and what, and the work that they're doing. Uh, let's see, what's next? For me, Attorney Denise?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we, uh, we have, we have news to provide to you all. So your attorneys have requested an attorney-client session in the Southwest Florida Water Management District versus Citrus County case, uh, to present, uh, some information to you, and we'd like to schedule that on, um, well, the date, is the date on here? Oh, the nineteenth at three PM.
Madam Chair, motion to approve, oh, one.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five-zero. Mr. Howard, you sure you don't want to say something?
I just want to say happy holidays. Um, I've given each of you some homework over the holidays, uh, to be thinking about the twenty-twenty-five targets for action, giving you that homework, and what gets measured gets done. So there's a lot of great things that are happening throughout this county, one being the... So there's a lot of great things that are happening throughout this county, one being the EA for the extension of Crystal River. That project, we've been working on that for thirteen years. So you're starting to see lots of progress because you're focused, you're getting things done. So we've got a lot to do in twenty-twenty-five, looking forward to big things happening.
We got ten words out of them. All right, last open to the public. Uh, ma'am, Q.
How did I miss Q? It's after. Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me, pardon me.
I will be short. Stephen Schwartz, Beverly Hills. It's been a long day for all of us, including you, and I compliment you on your demeanor and keeping it calm and looking at ways to solve problems for the community. But I will just address a couple of things. Um, I won't go pu- much into the public hearing and the speaking of, uh, before. Hopefully, we'll have some workshops on that. Uh, I have some ideas, uh, including the fact that I like, uh, Ms. Davis's, uh, comment about the fact that they, when they come up in the beginning for a public speaking, they shouldn't be talking about things that are already on the agenda, because they'll get that opportunity to talk during the agenda. They have a lot of other issues that they probably want to talk about, and that would speed it up. Two is the fact that, uh, with that, uh, the board talked previously about, uh, either handing out tickets to people or collecting the green copies ahead of time, so people don't have to speak. Um, I do have a couple of questions. First, I would like to know if the flood zone map is going to be revised now that it's just county is flooding further inland. I would like to know if, um, um, when we're going to look at the fact of people having the availability of remaining anonymous so that they, uh, don't feel threatened when they make complaints. Uh, I'd also like to see, uh, us going in certain departments, um, being more, instead of reactive, proactive, especially like with, uh, a building out there, et cetera. And, uh, the other thing is, uh, when people do file a complaint with the county, they need to know where exactly to go. An example of that is, is, and I know I got shorted. Okay? Uh, I, it's, it's okay, uh, Janet. What I would like, what I would like to really know is, um, because it happened to me. They built across the street from me, and they went in there at six-fifteen in the morning, and they were setting up their, uh, cement pump truck, shook me out of my sleep in the early morning hours. And originally, I was sent to code compliance, which is not the place to go, and it's, ends up being because it's building. So people do know, need to know where to go to be able to solve that, because I was told by, uh, code compliance that, uh, they can set up, but they just can't start working. Well, as I explained to them, uh, isn't that part of their work? Setting up their equipment, isn't that doing work? So, they shouldn't be starting before seven o'clock in the morning, and that is taking place. And I'll leave it up to Mr. Howard to get with you with all the other things that we discussed in our meeting, so they don't have to bring it here, so we can all go home and eat.
Thank you. I'm just addressing, I'll, I'll address two of your issues. FEMA, we do not update the, the flood maps. That's strictly done by FEMA, that's one. That's federal agency. Number two, uh, anonymous complaints, that is driven by the Florida Legislature. They made the rules on that, and we have to comply with them.
Okay, no, I, that's fine, I'm glad, I got an answer, thank you.
Stephen, I believe FEMA updated their maps, was it three years ago now? Anybody know? It's three, I don't think it was four years ago, but they, they updated, they updated their, their maps, uh, about three years ago. So I wouldn't expect them again, and that was a long process to get there. I wouldn't expect it anytime soon again.
Well, I understand that too, but it's just like, and I understand why you want Pirate's Cove, but, uh, with all the storms coming through and them getting worse, you know, it's like people talk about, uh, uh, gla- a climate, climate change and, uh, things like that. But the fact of the matter is, is you have the opposite, you, you get the opposite reaction.
Thank you.
That's why up north, they're getting the worst winter they're going to have this year. It's going to be horrendous.
I'm going to send, uh, the naughty elf to your house. All right. All right, Diane, I just threw my gentle wave, thank you. Okay, now we are up, now we are up to announcement on board announcements.
Q-one vacancies on the PDC. Two regular members and one alternate member expiring terms on Planning and Development Commission that expire on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. The new terms will expire on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine. Also, one opening for a regular member with an unexpired term of January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
All right. And I don't, we're not reading upcoming meetings anymore.
Well, the AR didn't get changed, but we haven't been reading them.
Okay. All right, we stand adjourned.